Let's kick us when you're ready. I'll work through it and see what comes up.
All right, ready? Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Our next meeting will be June 19th. We will also have a joint working meeting with the Planning Board on June 26th to discuss collaboration on a number of issues of joint concern, including the Housing Production Plan, Field Management Plan, and the Town Master Plan. Want to introduce folks here at the table. Mariano Golubov, Lance Grenzback, Richard Howard, Town Manager, Dave Arico, and Mike Bettencourt. Before we get to the agenda, I just want to take a moment to express the appreciation of the Board for the timely and effective response by the DPW Engineering Department, Police and Fire Departments, and the On-Site Contractors to the emergency at the Scali Dam construction site last Thursday, June 1st. Thanks to their prompt response, a potentially dangerous situation was quickly stabilized and a dangerous flooding situation was avoided. For those of you who have not been watching the TV news or reading our local papers, the incident arose when a cofferdam holding back the waters of Horn Pond to permit construction of a new gate as part of Winchester's flood control program was undermined permitting water to enter the site in amounts that the pumps were unable to keep up with. Town personnel and contractor responded swiftly and placed sandbags to minimize the downstream flow and stabilize the situation so as to permit repair of the cofferdam and completion of construction. I want to publicly acknowledge their efforts and extend our appreciation for their expertise and diligence in averting what could have been a major flooding event. So with that, if there are any comments from other select members of the Board.
Yeah, I'd like to extend my thanks to the Town Day Committee as well as all the small businesses, all the local community groups who participated. Friday and Saturday was a fantastic event. WEFI for hosting the race, which was also a fantastic event. If I may, congratulations to my wife for winning her H group in that WEFI race. So it was just a great event. It brought the residents of Winchester to our village and it just showcased the best of Winchester.
Excellent point. Lance?
Just two points. I think most of the board members are aware, but we learned last week that Emmanuel Lamede, who was the mayor of the town of Saint-Germain-Allay, it's a suburb of Paris, died suddenly in a stroke a few days before. The funeral was held on Thursday. Well, Richard and I have met and traveled with him at some length. Winchester maintains a twin cities, sister cities relationship with Saint-Germain for I think about 25, 26 years. He was over here some years ago with his council. Richard traveled with him to the Normandy anniversary celebrations. And last year, I think it was, we were over there. They had a new neighborhood, a neighborhood that had been redeveloped industrial area that changed into a residential area. And they dedicated the main avenue as Avenue to Winchester. He was a very gracious host. So Richard and I arranged to have a floral arrangement sent over representing the town and the Board of Selectmen. And this week, we got a few minutes. I think we'll sort of put together a formal letter and then invite the board members to sign and we'll send it off to the council and family there. So that was unhappy news. Locally, I've had a lot of calls from people interested in how they could get rid of all the airplanes going into Logan Airport. I think there are, Mr. Whitehead and I and Betsy Craigor from the Planning Board attended a series of meetings on airport noise last year. I think we learned several things. One is that the runways are being closed down for repair, so we're the lucky recipients of a lot more plane flight paths than we usually are. On the positive news, the airlines have basically been moving into current generation planes and engines a lot quieter, which is good. The air traffic control system also brings them in much higher and drops them much faster, so they're not quite as noisy. I remember growing up, you could count the rivets in some of the planes as they flew over. It's not quite so bad. The downside of the new air traffic control system, the beacons, is that instead of having a fairly wide arrival pattern and then going in, they're now funneled in a much narrower channel. And so it's really hammering certain neighborhoods. The other good news I heard, I heard a rumor from Mrs. Craigor that Diop Gereus on the Planning Board, who has a background in physics and astrophysics, I think, might be interested in participating in some of the community working groups that are trying to push the airport, FAA and Logan, to disperse and look at how they're moving it over. So I'm told he volunteered to do that. If that's correct, I would recommend maybe the chairman sort of either in absentia or otherwise perhaps invite him in and we can appoint him to do that because it's quite an annoyance. I'm not sure how much influence we'll have, but we should certainly have our voice. If we can shout above the plane noise. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, David?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank all of the parents that helped out with the seniors at McCall that had the all-night graduation party at McCall. They had the pleasure of being a blackjack dealer from midnight till 3:00 AM.
Did the house win?
Falls and hits the table, that's why. But the kids really had a great time. I think the highlight is they have a hypnotist that around 2:00 in the morning starts off with 40 kids, gets down to about five to six kids, and it's hilarious and the kids really enjoy it. There's a lot of parents that help out with food and activities.
Good. Excellent. Michael?
I just want to say thank you to Good Energy and to Susan McPhee, the Town Energy Coordinator, for creating together the electricity aggregation program, Wind Power, that everyone's received a letter about. I know there was some initial confusion with it, but we've held two information sessions now. I was at one of the Jankson's this morning, which went over for almost two hours and was attended by many residents and we had a thoughtful discussion. So our website will be a good resource for information on that for the community. We'll update that frequently. There's a FAQ section there that should be able to answer some of your questions. It's a really great opportunity for us and very low risk for residents because they can opt out at any time, but have stability in their pricing for electricity on the supply side. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, moving on to Town Manager.
Thank you, Jim. Many of the same topics. I won't elaborate, all the same comments, but the flooding project, I would reiterate, we thank the project team, especially the municipal departments from the two communities that went up and helped out the contractor.
Yes.
Stem what looked to be kind of a tough situation. We met today with Mayor Galvin of Woburn and both the engineering departments and DPW departments of the two communities together with the project contractor. And it does look that there's been a resting of the problem and a way to move forward so that the project is going to be back up and running as of tomorrow. Utility aggregation, electricity aggregation, we know that that's a topic on your agenda, so I won't go too far into that, but we're glad that's progressing. Same congratulations to the Town Day folks who put on a good event for the entire community the first Saturday in June every year. I was glad to be out there with all of the selectmen who stopped by and made themselves available to meet with constituents, answer questions. Very good turnout and a good day overall.
And I would add that Mr. Howard did a very good job. We directed all the difficult questions to him while we were standing around.
Worked out great.
Worked out well.
And I might mention that also on Town Day, we cut the ribbon on the fish ladder, for which we owe a great deal of debt of gratitude to John Kilborn for his tireless efforts to make it all happen. Very nice event.
And we hope that by this time next year, the dam at Mill Pond is back in action. We allow it to be able to fill back up to its natural level. And when that happens, then the use of the fish ladder will actually come into play and we'll be able to see that herring migration that John and many of the concerned citizens that deal with the Mystic River watershed area have been watching for many years. And fish will begin to flow further upstream, right up the entire course of the Abbeijona. So this time next year, we should see a big change in the utilization of the ladder itself. Look forward to that. We get some of these projects done, these culvert projects that the town has going on at Mount Vernon and at Skilling's and up at the dam as well. But they had fish up there as of the time of the event on Friday.
You could see them jumping up over the sandbags as they were being.
They were trying to get out of the way as well.
All right. That brings us to matters from the audience. Are there any person who wishes to come forward and talk? Yes. If you would identify yourselves and then let us know why you're here.
John Kirkpatrick, Five Fairfield Place, Winchester.
Sam Guzali, I live at Two Fairfield Place in Winchester.
Jerry Donat, I'm at 14 Linden, Winchester.
Joseph Lusova, Six Fairfield Place.
Okay.
So you know, our streets, Linden, Middlesex, Fairfield, we understand that the town yard's going to be taken down the wall because it's in bad disrepair and putting up a chain link fence. And we really feel that that's going to have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. It's going to change its look, its feel. And we really respectfully request the town to reconsider that position and come up with a better plan that fits it. More likely like another brick wall that would fit the existing building and connect the ones that are staying. And go ahead.
Yeah, just similar in size, shape, and material is what I would envision to have that be replaced. I actually don't recall, and I don't think anybody here had gotten any kind of notice that that was going to be torn down and what was going to be put in its place. So I want to make note of that as well.
Hopefully you'd received a letter that we collected.
Yes, we received your letter, yes.
And we've done a bit of research in reviewing the Winchester master plan that's out on the website. And you know, the character of the neighborhood would be significantly changed if a chain link fence replaces the brick wall. I mean, granted, the brick wall, if it were maintained and repaired, would have a much greater appeal for the neighborhood, but even replacing what's currently there with a chain link fence, we feel would dramatically change the character of the neighborhood from aesthetics to property values to the noise levels that we would hear from the yard. Right now, at least, the brick wall does provide some cover and shield us from some of the noise. And DPW's been a good neighbor, but putting a chain link fence would really create a lot of issues for us as a neighborhood.
I think we're pretty reasonable folks here. We don't usually get up and come down and complain. And kind of a testament to that, you know, I've talked to a couple of people that don't even live in the neighborhood and heard that, and they said they'd do the exact same thing if that was happening to their neighborhood. So I don't think we're being unreasonable in this request. I understand the constraints that the town is under, but you know, right's right. And we really would again appreciate you guys reconsidering that.
We'll take it up with staff and bring it up at our next meeting on the 19th. So we will have another chance to review this. My understanding is that it's not a complete removal of the wall, but a partial removal, partly budget-driven, but we can look into that and see what the options are. And we'll have the DPW come in at next meeting and discuss them.
I also know, Jim, that historical commission has had some treatment of the situation as well. I don't know if it would be helpful to weigh in as well.
It's part of a capital plan. It's been in place for a while. This is really an interim construction solution. The wall itself is hazardous. It has to come down based upon its condition. So there has been historical weigh-in on what a final replacement product should be or could look like. This, what's being proposed now is this interim plan where the walls, the wing side of the walls would come down on either side. There's a portion in the middle that is maintained. And I think the long-range plan cost being a big driver here, it's probably a $1 million project just to replace the existing wall if it were designed with some product and similar style. So that's something that the Capital Planning Committee is struggling with in terms of resources to be able to come up with a final solution. But the interim solution is really about safety and taking that existing wall down now before it falls down on someone.
Would replacement of the wall be something that CPA could be used for if we had community preservation?
If it were determined to be a historic structure, it could, yes. It falls within that category. Funds that could be used for housing historic.
So for longer-term replacement of it. Even if we pursue a temporary fix for safety, we can go back to restore via CPA?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the intention is that there's still a second look at what the long-range design solution will be. Either with CPA funds or just with capital planning funds.
I mean, this project's been on the list, on the capital planning list for a number of years. And of course, the wall's gotten to the point where it's dangerous. And so this is the interim step to try to maintain the safety of people, perhaps we don't have somebody walking by it at a wall for somebody. So this is until we can get the capital.
Well, I think that's one of our concerns. If we take the interim step, there's no guarantee there's going to be any fall-through here. I mean, we've heard about, you know, as you just pointed out, this has been on the agenda for some time. I know from discussions folks have had with the DPW, they've been talking about doing something for that wall for years.
Yes.
And at times, there have been money put set aside for some form of fix-up. And that money always seems to go someplace else. So an interim solution sounds great. If it really were a stepping stone, we could be guaranteed that. But in this environment, I, you know, it doesn't feel like it's going to get done.
Yeah, some of the, it's been on a discussion docket for years. I mean, some of the work that was done earlier was to take down pieces of the sheds that were falling down.
Yeah.
And to firm up the walls, but they were particularly Band-Aid kind of applications. I know that there's been discussion of, you know, I mean, it's a million dollars to rebuild the full brick wall. There's been some discussion of could you build a, you know, structurally sound cinder brick wall on the inside and then have brick facing the veneer facade so you're going to maintain. And there's been pros and cons, but both of those have been, you know, when the choice came down to flood control versus the wall, it was always, as you point out, second choice.
Yeah. I mean, we live across it. We've seen the shingles.
You've been watching it, yes.
And the nails come flying on the street left and right. So we understand.
That is a very old structure. David?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had an opportunity to walk the site with the DPW. And so there is a very small section out of the 300 feet that would be kept there. I guess it had the most historical significance to the wall. But again, I can feel the concerns of the neighbors that, you know, there's no definite timeline on the interim. So if there is an opportunity to work with historical to come up with some middle ground to, you know, not go with the chain link fence, I don't know what the history is with that, but you can definitely see their point that if there's no timeline on there, you could have a chain link fence there for years.
I mean, I'd ask each of you, I mean, if the view out the living room window, which is actually the view out of my living room window, right now, you see a brick wall, how would you feel personally about seeing a chain link fence? And that's kind of the position that we find ourselves in.
Yeah, no, I mean, I absolutely agree with you. I think that we should aim to preserve that. I think the question is, you know, a question of finding the funding. And I think we should explore, you know, Community Preservation Act because that seems to be a perfect, that seems to be designed to address these kinds of issues. And it also helps bring funding from the state as well as from the town partnership. So I think we need to explore that for the medium term, definitely.
All right, well, thank you. We will, again, as I said, we'll take it up with DPW and we'll look into it and we'll have staff come back with a recommendation hopefully by our next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
We'll let you know. Are there any other matters from the audience that wish to be raised? Claire?
Just a small matter. I saw somewhere in the printing with all of the documents we had, it wasn't a million. It was more like 600,000. So a million is way inflated from the figures we saw. I think from the city, I can't remember where, but it wasn't a million. It was more like 600,000.
Could have been 10 years ago.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Claire Barden. I live on Bonnet Road in Winchester. I've been a resident of Winchester for just under two years now. I'm here to make a comment tonight about some items on the agenda. Both the Holton Street proposed 40B development and also the Housing Production Plan. I have three main points I'd like to make. My first is that I respect you.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order where you generally don't. We really would take those comments at the agenda items when they come.
Oh, okay.
So if you would, you know, hold off until then.
That'd be fine. And then I'll just speak at that point.
We'll certainly let you speak at that point.
Great. All right, thank you.
Okay. This is for non-docket items. Yeah, okay. All right, we don't have a Controller's Report tonight. Our Controller being on vacation in Sicily.
Cyprus.
Cyprus, Cyprus.
Even warmer.
Cyprus, even warmer. So first item on the agenda is licenses. Do we have Deb Richardson here? Good. Would you come forward?
Do we need to wait until eight? Since it's posted.
Pardon?
It's listed as 8 o'clock. Should we wait until?
Oh, we got to wait five minutes.
Yeah. So can we? Yeah. Sorry.
We have to wait until exactly.
We actually have to wait.
We haven't listed.
Okay, I'll come back.
Officially posted, sorry.
We have the government comes in and. Consent agenda, right? Shuts us down.
Why don't you jump to the consent agenda? Well, actually, why don't we jump to the first item of business?
We do have the treasurer.
Treasurer. Sheila's right behind you.
Oh, Sheila's right behind me, okay. So let's jump to the first order of business, the bond anticipation notes for the Abbeijona Culvert and Winchester High School.
Good evening. So we have, for approval tonight, is a short-term bond anticipation note for a portion of two projects. 4.7 million for the high school project and 2.5 million for the Abbeijona Culvert project for a total of 7.2 million. So we received six bids on the sale last Thursday, and Eastern Bank was awarded the bid with a net interest rate of 0.99 percent. So a little less than 1 percent. So that's a very good rate. They're going to come and do in October. And we set that timeframe because we have two other bands coming do in October. And at that point, we will probably, hopefully permanently finance most of the projects that are, except for the Riedelok Farm. The other projects will all be permanently financed for about $11 million. But this is just a short-term borrowing to get us to October in the amount of 7.2 million dollars. And we have the vote. Do you have the copy of that, Michael?
I do.
This is the one, the school part is SAVI, so you have to do sign those.
So the 1.5 percent, is that the coupon?
Yes.
And then we will be paid the premium?
It's the premium.
We will be paid the premium to make the difference.
There was a premium of just over 13,000. We actually had really wanted a premium at least to cover the issuance costs.
Yeah.
Which it does, so.
You mentioned 0.99 percent.
That's the net cost after the premium.
After the premium.
Yes. The net interest rate. But that is the coupon rate that you mentioned.
And this is short-term with, there's no principal payment associated with it?
Correct. So the interest payment will come due in October. We have two other bands coming do in October also. And at that point, one of those bands is the Riedelok Farm, which has now been paid, so that won't be renewed. But the projects in the last band included the Skilling's remediation, another part of the Abbeijona Culvert, and a small piece of the VO school. So all of those in October will more likely than not be permanently financed.
Okay. You also will have the Turfield at that time?
Yes. That will also be included in the permanent financing. After July 1st, we'll be back before you for an internal borrowing to get that project started. And then it will be permanently financed in October with the others.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Michael? You're on. You're on for a while.
A lot of motions.
Let me just read through this, or do you need a general motion first to approve the 7.2?
Yeah, motion.
Just read the whole thing.
Okay.
And we vote to approve it.
It's five separate motions.
Right.
I'll just read them together. I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Winchester, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held June 5th, 2017, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and in which forum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of 7.2 million dollars, 1.5 percent general obligation bond anticipation notes. The notes of the town dated June 15th, 2017, and payable October 27th, 2017, to Eastern Bank at par in accrued interest plus a premium of 13,358 dollars and 40 cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 24th, 2017, and a final official statement dated June 1st, 2017, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer, the Board of Selectmen, be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the town treasurer and bond counsel deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer, be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provision of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, Section 2B. At least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the note were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 to 25 as amended, dated June 5th, 2017.
Could I have a second on all?
So moved.
Are they all in favor?
Aye.
So I'm going to leave the typical document you can just.
Yeah, so we can all sign.
As you possibly can sign them. And they're all tabbed with the.
Do you do this now or?
All right. Now being 8 o'clock. Now.
Okay.
Ally can deal with your.
Did you need me to sign these, Sheila, too?
Yeah, just you.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you need to take these with you now?
Yeah.
From here.
So this is a vehicle-for-hire license for Checker Cab of Woburn. And before we get started, I just had one question. There's a little conflict in the application in one page. On the first page, it says 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM is the working hours, and later on in the thing, it says 24/7.
We were going to do 5 to 8 in Winchester. We're open 24 hours in Woburn, so that's why I put that down.
Okay.
But we're not going to operate 24 hours down here.
You'll be operating.
They do call us from Winchester. We're out here at 4:00 AM picking people up for the. the, whatnot, already. But the taxi itself that we wanna run in the town will be during the day.
Okay. And I do wanna commend you for working with the COA on the voucher program they have for seniors. I think that's a great program and appreciated by all. So are there any questions from any of the, I guess we need to open hearing? Open. Are there any comments from the audience in terms of this license? Hearing none. I'll close the public here for that and ask for a motion.
Chairman, I move that we approve the vehicle for hire license for Deborah Richardson doing business as Checker Cab of Woburn Incorporated at 28, 289R Salem Street, Woburn, Mass. 01801.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any other comment?
I just wanted to commend these folks for helping out the seniors at the Jenks with their voucher program. Be great to bring them into the Winchester community officially.
Yeah, I would second that. I think it's been under discussion for some time, and I think it's proved very popular, so I think we've got very good feedback for it. Thank you.
That was one of the goals of, when I first came in with, working with Philip, was that if we have the cab down here, we're gonna be able to get the price a little lower, because as it is, we have to send the cars back and forth from Woburn for the voucher program, which had the cost up, you know, even being, we started at 12 and it got so popular, we've gone down to 10 per, we were hoping maybe we could get it down to 8 for the seniors, so.
That'd be great.
Which is what we do in Woburn for that, for the senior program there also. So that was one of the goals of getting the license down here. We have a car down this way, less travel time, less gas, might be able to translate into, which also mean, could mean more voucher work for us, so could be good for everybody.
Great.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we have all in favor, we're aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, this is- One more license. Second-hand dealer, articles dealer and keeper of a shop, Resolve. Is someone here representing Resolve?
Revolve.
Revolve?
This is where you want, so it's just-
Okay. So, could I then have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the renewal of the application by second-hand for Revolve at 24 Thompson Street, expiration May 1, 2018.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So that brings us to the second order of business, appointment of Catherine Villega to the Town Forest Committee. Is Catherine here? No? All right.
You know what, Jim, when I talked with her, I told her she probably, you know, it's probably about 8:15.
Uh-huh.
Things will go a bit faster than I thought they were gonna go.
All right, so maybe we'll just come back to this and we'll move on to-
I know Ms. Barden also was here on the, from the matters of the audience, that we can move to the discussion of the-
I don't think that's-
Okay.
Well, we have Susan McPhee and Philip here, so why don't you come forward and we'll deal with that first?
Good evening.
Good evening. So we're, we got them all.
You got them all, right?
We're getting a lot of phone calls.
Yes.
Susan and Philip have been doing a lot of outreach. She's had a couple of community meetings already. As Mike referenced, there was one this morning at the Jenk Center. So as we've said from time to time at this table, we've launched out on this aggregate, electricity aggregation effort, which is a subset of an effort put together by MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, involves a series of other communities that are out doing the same thing, attempting to buy electricity in bulk in order to be able to turn a, return a favorable rate to our residents and some business owners. As you know, we had that sale, our bid, a couple of weeks ago now. And with Philip and Good Energy's consultation, we think we received a favorable enough rate to lock into a 30-month timeframe. And notices of that commitment have gone out. As we remember, you know, it's an opt-out kind of a program, so a homeowner is in the program unless they indicate to Good Energy and Dynergy, who's the supplier at the end of the line, that they're out and they would, you know, can do whatever they want at that point, but generally stay with Eversource and the default rate that gets purchased by Eversource and passed along to the customer that way. So the reaction, once people began to get the information, they began to pay attention. They wanna know a little bit more about what it's about, how favorable is our rate gonna be in comparison to what Eversource may be able to achieve over the same 30-month timeframe? Philip can reiterate all those points to you and why we think it's a good deal. And then before the actual lock-in date, which is-
That period ends on June 26th?
Yeah, June 26th.
Right, and the meet-a-read date is July 6th.
Yeah, we can try to send out whatever additional information the board would think would be necessary to, again, keep residents and business owners up to speed. But based upon the apparent feedback, some of it good, once people get the explanation, I believe. Some others believe maybe it's not an area that municipality should be venturing into and leave my electricity rates alone, or whatever. We think in general, people have the sense of what the program is about, and that we are trying to do the best thing for them in terms of a locked-in rate, not to mention the, the options to commit to a renewable energy source, if that's to your liking in terms of how you purchase your energy. But Philip, any reaction to how it's gone so far?
Yeah, so I think, so maybe I'll talk a little bit about the marketing you've done, and then just a sort of a brief overview, which might help you all, anyone who's watching, just give you some soundbites on the real core benefits of the program. First of all, I think the marketing's done very well. I think Susan's done an excellent job in coordinating that. I think you've been helped by having your town day right at the beginning of the opt-out period. But, so from a marketing perspective, because what you're, what you're slightly fighting here is inertia, right? Because with the best will in the world, you know, it's hard to educate everybody, but as long as you're seen to be making that effort, you've sent out a postcard to everybody in town. Not every community does that. You've done that. You've had a briefing last week here for interested citizens, and we had our partners, Sustainable Energy Advantage, who are renewable energy specialists, and Mass Energy Consumers Alliance, provide the local power, and also Good Energy representative was there. We had the town day booth and brochures that I think have been going off like hotcakes, and this morning at the Jenk Center. So I think it's an integrated package that I think is, I think, I think you've done a good job, and I like the way it's all happened at one big intense time. So I think marketing, you've done a good job. So, so the benefits of the program, so the key thing always to remember with this is no one's ever locked into anything they don't wanna do. That's, that's the most important thing. So everybody goes up and says, hey, what's going on here? It's like, you can leave whenever you want. The opt-out period is called the opt-out period because that's when you get the buying power. It's when you get that automatic enrollment, okay? So you have to have that period, because we're trying to simulate Eversource's buying power. Eversource has buying power. We just wanna simulate the buying power so that then we can buy strategically in the market, whereas, and for as long as we want in the market, which Eversource cannot do. So, so first off, you know, the, no one's ever locked into what they don't wanna do. And, and after the opt-out period is over, you can leave at any time without penalty. So that's the most important thing. So we're, we, we felt that the 30-month term is, is a good timeframe. One of the structural challenges of the market right now is that there is an over-reliance on natural gas generation and not enough pipeline to bring that natural gas in at the times that you need it. And if you have an extreme weather event in the winter, when the utility is buying power, you can end up with price spikes, which you've had in recent years. You now essentially have insurance against that. Whatever happens over the next 30 months, you have one rate that is not gonna change. And the intention is for that rate to save you money over time, and particularly, that takes you through two winter periods. So the, the basic option, so there are three options. You have your basic option, which you have to opt down to, is below the basic service rate right now, by a fraction, or will be substantially below it during the winter period. So in any scenario, if someone was to opt down to basic, they're definitely saving money for 12 months, period. If you wanna go with the local renewable energy option, which is the default product, you're also gonna save money over a 12-month period. We're convinced of that, based on what we expect to see in the Eversource winter rates. Then you're gonna enter the summer period, which you will be above. And then you will go into another winter period, which once again, we expect you to save against. And then the final six-month term, six-month portion of the 30-month rate will be a summer period, when you'll probably be above it. But what's great about this program is that you can benefit for 24 months and just leave for the last six. The supplier carries the risk on that. You really can use this option as it suits you, right? So it's essentially, it's, it's another choice for you, and another choice for your residents. And that's the way to think about it. No, no one's railroad in anything they don't wanna do. Anybody can leave whenever they want. There's, we believe tremendous value over a 24-month period. And the last, the last six, we just don't know, but you, you can leave at that time. You can leave at any time. So, so, so that's what, does that help give some sort of talking points there? And also, on the local renewable energy side of things, we always believe the economics are, are the basis of the program. That's something I sort of stress about most, because we pride ourselves on saving people money. But, but what you're doing with local renewable energy is groundbreaking. There, there are several communities who are moving forward with this approach, and you're, you're part of that wave. And, and you're, you're incorporating 5% additional to the renewable portfolio standard with local Class 1 RECs. What that means right now, the state mandate increases the renewable portfolio standard for Class 1 RECs at 1% every year. So you're now essentially five years ahead of the renewable portfolio standard for the state. And you're, you're driving additional demand for local renewable energy. That's local renewable energy for the local economy, the local renewable energy industry within Massachusetts and the broader New England ISO. So that, that's a significant thing. And, and that's something that, if that is important to you, you can be proud of that. You're certainly a, a, a community that is now a climate leader. And 5% may not sound like a lot, but I always use the example of the leaf cutter ants, you know, they're carrying one leaf at a time, but before you know it, the whole forest is gone. Everybody carries a little bit of weight, and, and you have a big impact. You know, by, by, by Winchester using an additional 5% a year, that's one of those large wind turbines, one and a half megawatt wind turbines, that's more than their annual output. So you're driving additional demand for local renewable energy.
Now, is that 5% over the, I believe it's 12%, right, the basic right now for the state? Is the 5, does the 5% increase every year as well? So is the 5% over the minimum each year? So next year will be 18% and-
Correct, absolutely right. So it'll always be 5% on top.
Okay.
So it's like 13 plus 5, you're probably absolutely right. Yep.
One of the questions I heard is the, the option to go to one of the three wind power rates. Does that also end on the 26th, or can you change after that?
All of those options are available right throughout.
Anytime.
Yep.
The, the other question that I, has come up of, that I'm more frequently asked is, what if I'm already signed up with some other power company for, for service delivery? My understanding is that you're not part of this program.
Yeah, yeah, you're not part of the program, and you will not have been sent a letter. However, if you wanna get into the program, you call Dynergy, or they'll call Town Hall, you can call us or Dynergy. But you must look at your early termination fees, because some contracts have no early termination fees, some have extremely punitive termination fees of like $250, $300. So, so do the arithmetic on that. One of the benefits of aggregation is, is education. Your, your, electricity is one of those line items that people generally just pay without really understanding. And everybody is being direct marketed all the time. We just found out today that someone working closely with the town, maybe I shouldn't mention names here, but someone who works closely with, with our campaign, found that they had actually been on a competitive supplier and is paying far more than the Eversource's basic service rate. And, and this is what we find. They're thinking, why didn't I get a bill? They suddenly realize they're on with another supplier. Some of those offers may have value, some of them are extremely punitive. And so this helps educate people on, on electric competition, because it's a little bit Wild West out there. As I may have mentioned before, there's a lot of offers out there. So what you've done is, is you kinda circled the wagons, you've gone out into the market and said, we're producing a responsible option for our residents. Responsible fiscally and responsible as it relates to local renewable energy. Use it if you like, or do your own thing. But we've, we've identified in the market, there needs to be some kind of stability, so we're coming up with an option for you.
Is there any risk to the town if, you know, a large percentage of the town decides to opt out?
No risk at all. Yeah, supplier carries all that risk. And that's great, because as, as I'm sure you know from your municipal accounts, if you wanna break that contract early, there's a penalty. Here, everybody could leave, and you would carry no financial risk at all.
David?
So it seems like there's peaks and valleys, summer higher, winter lower, and then summer higher. And you were saying that it's the last six months of the 30-month, stupid question, but why wouldn't we get a 24-month?
Good ques- that's not a stupid, it's a very good question.
Right.
The 24-month was a lot higher.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a much higher rate.
So, but you're relying on the individual homeowner to, to opt out for those last six months?
Well, here's the thing, not, not necessarily, because we're not sure what's gonna happen in the market.
Yeah.
But, but what we're saying is like, we believe there'll be savings over the entirety of the 30-month term. But the reason, so you might say, well, hang on, why wouldn't you stop it then there? Well firstly, we couldn't get the good pricing for 24 months, it was much higher.
Yeah.
But, but by also finishing in the January of, of that year, when you begin a new contract, if you decide to renew, you're gonna renew with, with the program that is, that is a win, which is what you want, as opposed to a program that, that may be underwater. So it's a combination of better pricing for 30 months, because it has that summer rate on the back end. It buys it down a bit.
Right.
But, but also, when you look to renew the, the new program, there's more chance of it being favorably received.
Well, and the fact that the rate that is negotiated fixed for 30 months is already lower than the variable rate that Eversource is providing for basic service. To me, it's fantastic, especially given that the rate that Eversource is giving is for the lowest-
Yeah.
-time of the year, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, we can't guarantee that, you know, prices will go up, but it's pretty much known, so.
But there's a part, there's the thought process that that last six months, it could be higher, and it would be advantageous to, to opt out.
I would say, I would say keep an eye on it. And, and if, if that is the case, then you can just opt out and then see what, see what the prices look like on the rebid to come back in again.
I think, I think one of the questions will be whether or not the community is re-aggregating at that point, and we have a-
Right.
-further program to continue to offer to-
Right.
Mr. Chairman, can we consider it because, you know, to some degree, we've become an agent for the residents with regard to this. Can we, you know, say in that last six months, you know, there's been public-
Yeah.
We offer public-
I think one of the things we're doing, Dave, is between Good Energy and the town's website and social media tools, we, we will have continual updates, whether it's monthly or no less than quarterly, I think the expectation is between the two of us, in terms of comparing where the town's rate is against what's going on in the marketplace. So there'll be, and I think- So, there'll be, and I think Phillip, and I think Good Energy is committed to maybe even monthly, if, uh, if, if town residents are interested in paying that close attention as to what's going on in the marketplace, we can continue to push information out so that we're doing that constant comparison and education, uh, of those that are in the program as to what's going on in the marketplace.
But the ever-source rates only change twice a year?
Twice a year. And that's, that's a good time to, to, to educate, is to, is to, um, we get notification of the rate change six weeks ahead. So, that's a good time to like, do messaging out there, and make sure that people understand what the value proposition is. But just thinking of it from a strategic sort of business point of view, um, we, we receive very strong value for twenty-four of the thirty, and it's just that last six, um, where, you know, and we can advertise around that, and say, you know, this might be a time when if you want to opt out, opt out, and you can come back in if, if the town chooses to read, to read.
And I think we can use our, the website, the Wind Power website
Absolutely.
... to post the, uh, the current rates
Right.
Uh, the six weeks ahead of time, when we know what ever-source's going to be, and we can compare, and point people to it if they want to opt out, if, if it happens that ever-source actually drops rates from below to what they are today.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, this is a field that's changing very rapidly, and it's very competitive right now.
Yeah.
And I'm guessing that one of the reasons DineGee gives you a good rate at thirty months is their borrowing to invest in production. And a thirty-month buy from their clients makes good sense to them and reduces their borrowing cost.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't be surprised, I mean, if, if it changes significantly, I wouldn't be surprised if they came back and wanted to hold on to clients in that last six months.
Well, that's
It's not, it's not necessarily in their favor to hold on to the contract. They could presumably come back and
Renegotiate.
Renegotiate at some point to, to hold on to
That can happen. That can happen. Yeah, yeah.
And we're, we're not in this alone. The other communities that have gone out under the M A P C package are
They're all, yeah, so they, yeah, thirty, thirty months, they all went for thirty months, except for one community that went for thirty-six. So, everybody's going for the same kind of time rate.
And but the ones that are then, yeah.
Somerville, Arlington, Brookline, Sudbury.
Exactly, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
We're not doing this totally in the
Yeah, we're not, we're not.
But as we know, Melrose had been out there doing it already, and Phillip and Good Energy represent, uh, a cohort of communities on Cape Cod that have been doing it for quite a while.
And just to give you some sort of, sort of sense of context on, on the pricing, so, so we have a buying group, um, which includes many communities along the South Shore, uh, and they recently renewed for a thirty-six-month contract starting in January. So, um, and, and the reason communities are generally going longer is, is that the analysis is that, uh, in the outer years, there's, there was value. We felt that, you know, by looking into the market, we were close to all-time lows when you looked in the outer years of energy. So, all the communities that we work with have gone for between thirty and thirty-six month contracts.
Just in terms of outreach and clarity for residents, in addition to the Wind Power website, we also have the water bills that we can use. So, we'll be putting an update in the water bill, because, um, bear in mind, please, that the opt-out letter went to people who were on the basic ever-source service. So, the only way the person that we're working with, um, found out, she was like, why didn't I get my opt-out letter? Well, if you're already in another contract that can be one of these really bad rates, you didn't get an opt-out letter. This might not be on your radar yet. So, we can also include water bills to say, this is what we have, check your bills, you may be in a position that this is a deal that would look really good to you compared to what you're getting. And then people might look at their contracts, find maybe that they're already finished, and they're continuing to pay this high rate needlessly. Who knows what's going on out there? But I think we're still just at the very start of this outreach. So, we've heard from the people who are on basic service, but there may be another whole cohort out there that we're just starting to hear from. Um, anyway, so the outreach can take many forms. Also, Wind Cam, um, taped today's, uh, meeting at the Jenks, and we had a lot of really good questions. So, hopefully, that will play several times in the next few weeks, so that if people want their questions to be answered, look at the Wind Cam schedule. We can also post the times when we get them, so it can be on the Wind Power website, the town website. So, hopefully, we can continue to get information out there in lots of different ways.
And, and that will be, um, ready to also be posted, um, to the town's Facebook site and through social media as well, so people can reach it even if the, the times on Wind Cam, um, aren't, don't line up with their schedule. Uh, it was a, a very good, uh, information session that we had today at the Jenks. I thought it went, uh, very well. And you do hear people that have, um, gotten into these other plans, and I think what sometimes people don't realize is, uh, there are other offers they get when people give them a call on the phone, and there's a, like everything else, a cheap introductory rate, and then, uh, it balloons after that, and people aren't looking at their electricity bill every day. It's just something that goes in the background of everything else that's going on. So, um, all of a sudden, they're maybe not, uh, surprised when their rate goes up in the winter as it normally does, but they don't, or their bill goes up, but they may not realize that also it's because of their rate increasing. And so, it's, um, the stability of the pricing of a thirty-month period is something that the board felt was worth it for the community, and, um, is a real value, especially if you look at the fluctuations from the ever-source, uh, pricing, uh, over the period of time. So, um, and, and I think the added value here as well is that it creates competition in the market. And, um, it, uh, ever-source, who, um, has told us that they don't, uh, get involved in competing on the supply side of the market, has been very aggressive now. When you, um, are aggregating amongst communities, uh, as well with, uh, Somerville and Arlington, not formally, but if everybody's going after one of these programs, uh, there's, that competition, um, drives the prices down for people. And we are, uh, in the most expensive, uh, area of the country for, uh, purchasing, uh, energy. And, um, and I think we're also in, in Winchester is in one of the, uh, most expensive, um, you know, areas as well, right, of the state? So, um
We're in Nema zones. And even within expensive Massachusetts, we're in the peak area of Massachusetts.
So, the risk is high, and the opportunity to, to opt out is, uh, you know, really, um, I think, an opportunity for, um, for the communities.
Now, there still is an opportunity for these, I would call them vultures, to, to poach, you know, people out of the system. Should we maybe be reaching out to our, you know, to some of our materials and, and tell them when, when those people call? Just tell them that you're part of an aggregation program? That seems to shut them up in a big hurry.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah.
And we're hoping honestly that, um, by Winchester being one of the names of the communities being out there, perhaps the, the more predatory calls, they'll think, oh, well, we better go to a different town where the, the residents haven't been exposed to this, haven't heard about this, and maybe, um, are less aware.
To add on to Jim's point, I, I've received three mailings in the last week or so. One of those, the towns. I would make very clear to people that the town's offering has Town of Winchester hammered all over the paperwork, because several people said, well, what are these? And they didn't bother to read through and differentiate them. So, it took quite a while to tell them there was, there was a significant difference. And I would congratulate you on your, uh, is getting closer to English? Moving away from pure bureaucratic governmentese. I wouldn't say it's the, I wouldn't say it's quite there, but it's much, it's much improved over the state's formal letter form.
Working on it.
Yes, that's good.
And I want to commend the use of local REX. That's very innovative. Um, you know, in addition to, to, uh, using renewable energy, it also provides jobs for the region, because to create that energy in our region, to put that windmill up, it creates jobs in our region that support our local economy. So, I think that's a fantastic, uh, innovative solution to, to purchasing those REX.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, one, uh, one more, uh, suggestion here is maybe that, uh, the board sends a letter to the community as well, just to, you know, emphasize our support for this and explanation. We started this process in 2015, so it seemed like it came, uh, out of nowhere, and all of a sudden, for maybe members of the community that weren't involved in the process, but we've been working on this, it's been before town meeting, we've had public hearings. Um, but maybe, uh, communication from, um, from the board as well would be helpful. I think there is some confusion, because some of the, uh, materials that were received were from, you know, outside of, uh, the town and, uh, outside of the state. So, um, maybe we can discuss that as well.
All right. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, and let's keep going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, it's moving right along here. Um, I don't see Catherine having arrived. Uh, so, do you want to make a, does anybody have any comments on the appointment of Catherine Velega?
I would suggest
Wait.
I would suggest we wait. I'd like to see her resume, I'd like to meet her. I think we set a precedent some years ago, that it'd be nice if we saw the folks on the committee as at least once formally into
All right.
If she arrives later, then perhaps you could
All right, we will hold, we'll hold off to the end. Let's, uh, Winchester Welcomes Group, could you, let it come forward and explain what you're up to?
Hello, I'm Alexandra Voe.
And I'm Marshall Brown.
And, um, we're with Winchester Welcome, which is a very informal group that started maybe just two months ago. And, um, we just felt that, uh, you know, just listening to the news with all the tensions and raids with ICE and, you know, fear that we've been reading, that we thought maybe we should just have a group to, um, to educate people, and to just have a forum to talk things out, and, um
Non-political.
Yes.
Apolitical.
So, in my letter, I kind of referenced the, uh, hate has no home here thing as an example of, I think, um, you know, the sign went up, and then somebody had a, an opinion on it, and then other people kind of went back and forth on it. And I think overall, that was a good idea to, you know, have this kind of like discussion out in the open. So, anyway, the, um, the short of it is, now that, uh, spring is here, we figure it's time to have more face-to-face, uh, personal relationship, rather than just be in our echo chamber in Facebook or whatever. So, we thought of this idea of having, um, an ice cream social on the green. And the concept of having something on the green is so that, um, you know, it's open to everybody to come, to talk about things, to, um, in fact, there's a, an, uh, resolution that's going up to the State House this Friday about the State Communities Act. And I think there's a lot of misinformation about that. People think that it's about, um, you know, undocumented immigrants guarding the law, when it's really not about that. It's talking about, um, you know, the roles that enforcement, local police, have, uh, in relation to the federal agents that are around. So, I mean, so that's one topic that we could discuss. But, I mean, the, the main idea of asking for permission to use the green is really just to be out there, meet people, meet, meet our neighbors. And, um, and I actually, for myself, I frankly don't know, um, whether there's a, a large immigrant population here that has, that have fear or no fear, or, I, I just don't know. So, I thought maybe we should just make ourselves known, so that, um, anybody who has any concern can come to us and know that, you know, we do exist, and we're willing to, uh, to talk to them.
Right. The group has been establishing itself on social media. And, um, one of the things that we're really focusing on is, we've got to get back to having civil discourse in this country. We're just not doing a good job overall, anywhere, and Winchester can lead the way. You know, it's hard to hate somebody when you're slurping down an ice cream cone, you know, you just, you can't help but smile, and if somebody's right alongside of you, and maybe they have a different opinion, you have a conversation, you don't have a fistfight, you know?
Well, one of the questions that I think the reason we asked you to come in, uh, to, to discuss this was the, the thought that you're also, that's the first day of the Winchester Farmers Market.
Right. Well, some things have, so, we didn't know that, and some things have changed since then too, because, you know, we're, we're going to be asking some companies to help us out with donations for the food and drink and so forth. And we're jammed right up against that date. And we're thinking that we would like to change the date to Sunday the eighteenth.
Right.
And it would be at the same time, but it would be on a later date, instead of being on the tenth, which is the Saturday.
Wouldn't it make, you know, I, I'm just throwing out an idea, I mean, wouldn't it make sense to maybe just have your event at the same time as the Farmers Market, when you get, because it draws so many people?
Well, we were kind of hoping we would get at the tag end of the Farmers Market, because people are coming and going, and then we'll be setting up, they'll stick around, we'll lure them with ice cream cones and cups of coffee, and they'll stay a little bit longer. And, you know, one of the things we had discussed was potentially getting some, a, a live group to perform, you know, an acoustic band or something to perform at the same time. So, you know, it would sort of extend the day. It's a feel-good kind of end.
No, but actually, we're asking for a Sunday, not a Saturday.
Oh, that's right.
Right.
Forgive me.
So, you're, you're really asking for a Sunday?
Yeah, we're asking for a Sunday.
Certainly have, I don't think any of us have any objection to you using the Common for this purpose.
No, I, I commend you for, you know, putting yourself out there and for organizing, for wanting to organize something like this. I agree that more conversations are, are needed. I think that when people meet face-to-face, um, you know, most communication is, is beyond verbal, so, uh, I, I think it's great. And, uh, the weather is, is perfect for
Right.
... in the summer in Winchester, for people to come to the Common. And, uh, I think Sunday is great, because people already come on Saturday for the, uh, for the market. Then they go home, they're tired by two, come back the next day on Sunday.
Yeah.
The eighteenth is last day, just so.
Yeah, I know, but then if we waited another week, then school was out and everybody's on vacation, so.
You know, maybe some enterprising mothers will think, gee, we can get our kids to take the fathers out.
Yeah.
Ice cream on the Common, yeah.
So, June eighteenth.
Yes.
All right. Uh, Dave, do you have any thoughts?
Good.
Mike?
Um, I, well, I, I know that we probably need to loop in the Board of Health here as well, and I don't know, on the insurance side
You will need, you will need a permit from the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's another reason to go out another week, since we're right up against the
Yeah. You know, anytime you serve food, you will need, now, it, maybe if you have a vendor coming to do that for you?
Oh, they would have their own license?
They would have their own, they would have to get a license. They still have to check
Oh, I see.
And insurance, uh, you know, they would need insurance bond.
You know, I, I just warn you, because we had a little incident on Town Day where a barbecue didn't happen, because they didn't get their act together with the help of barbecue soon enough. James, this is kind of a heads up.
Um, might we put them in touch with some of the folks who organized the Farmers Market, who could, they've got a lot of lessons learned there that might be worth their talking to.
Fred Yen, are you familiar with
Perhaps get you his address or telephone. Yeah, so, we can, maybe Patty can
Call in here.
Call in, and we could get
Come to the office tomorrow.
Okay, Penny.
Yeah, there's Fred, Fred Yen, and there's a, there's a large group of people that have helped manage the whole thing, and they could probably
I mean, it could be further on down the road. They, they have a, they have a booth that they assign to a group every week, you know, just, uh, is, I believe it's gratis, um, so that they have different groups, uh, there, and you could, you could set up maybe later in the year, uh, toward the fall, have another, another booth or something there, so.
And the, the insurance question is the other one. I don't know if that's, if we require it for this.
Anytime we're using
Anytime we
Topper.
Yeah, okay.
That, that is, you know, a requirement for, uh, insurance, that naming the town as a co-insured, I suspect they told you about that already.
No.
No?
Not yet.
It goes into the letter of approval once the board votes it. That there is, and I think I did mention it to someone that I talked with, that insurance is required. So I was trying to get you to hook on to the Farmers Market.
Yeah, they say they're already covered, so.
They're already covered and you would be slipping in under their coverage.
Oh.
Maybe want to think about that.
Yeah, so would we.
Could ease a lot of headaches and costs.
Right.
Which would mean you'd have to do it on a Saturday.
Yeah. But I think, yeah, we might have to do that.
I suspect it would be cost-effective.
Maybe get started. Get more people and less cost.
Yeah. So, okay, so should we switch it to the 17th?
Could be the 17th.
So it could be the 17th, yes.
Yes.
No, I would think you'd want to talk to Fred and make sure he's got, doesn't have something else planned for that date that's a big event.
Okay.
Because I know there are times when they bring in vendors, other, you know, people who sell jewelry and, or they have Kids' Day where they have a lot of tables set up for events. So.
All we're selling is goodwill.
No, that's right. But it's still.
You just want a spot to sell it.
It's just saying that they occupy a lot of space and there may not be space.
Right.
So that would be worth.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think we could move.
We'll absolutely put them in touch with.
Yeah.
So are we going?
The organizers.
The 17th, yes.
We go with the 17th and.
Saturday.
If anything changes, we will obviously let you know.
Yeah, you can come back, you can come back.
I don't think we need a motion, right? Because they're going to get in contact with the, we have.
We can get consent once we have a.
Right.
Fudge? Would you like sprinkles, too?
So we meet again on the 19th. So rather than, than, and make a formal motion tonight, why don't you come back to us and let us know that that's the date you want? And then you don't even have to come in, we'll just.
It'll be after the date.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're the 17th.
Oh, the 17th, yeah.
So you might want to make a provisional.
Provisional motion tonight, I think, yeah.
Contingent upon the town manager's review and of the applicable food permits and insurance in that affair.
So Mr. Chairman, move that we provisionally approve the Winchester Welcomes group for a ice cream and coffee social open to all residents on Saturday, June 17th, pending approval of the town manager in compliance with any insurance and Board of Health requests and anything else that is typically required of these events.
Second. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimous. So we'll get the, get the date fixed and talk to Patty and we'll get, you know, she'll keep you organized.
Okay.
We're happy to help you.
We're happy to help you, whatever we can, yeah.
We're not going to be able to take care of the rain, but that's another reason.
All right.
We can't guarantee the weather, I'm afraid.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Okay, one other quickie, I think, is a vote to approve the proprietary specification for Thornberry Road. I would see.
Do you have a memo in the file?
You have a memo in the file.
Forward, I think.
This is pretty straightforward, frankly. In fact, I think it's a good idea because what's happening here is we're trying to standardize our spare parts and our maintenance by focusing on a single vendor for pump, submersible pumps in our pump stations. This vendor also being from Woburn, which is close at hand, so spare parts are readily available in the, in a short notice if we need them. So I think it's good thinking on the Engineering Department.
Administration recommends.
I would recommend that we do that.
Mr. Chairman, I knew that we allow the proprietary specification for submersible pumps to be included in the Thornberry Road Pump Station Improvement Project, for a project to be bid in June.
Specifically Xylem Inc. Flicked Products from Woburn. Okay, all in favor?
All right. Chair, could I just ask the town manager, was this pump station, was this any relation to the Winning Farm?
This is, this is it.
This is the one.
This is the one where he's pledging.
We're bidding it now, they will reimburse us for the cost.
Just a quick update, what's going on with Winning and.
I believe they have all their verbal permits, approvals from the permit granting authority, ZBA.
Yeah.
As I understand it, a decision is being written up and then there's obviously an appeal period.
Right.
From the final decision and barring what would be any appeal of the permit, I think the Winning Group is looking to close with the owners shortly thereafter.
Excellent.
So if not by the end of the month.
That's going to be used a million times.
Well, we're not telling anybody about that.
All right, now with your permission, I would like to jump ahead to Holton Street and the Housing Production Plan so that Claire can join in the conversation here and not be kept up all night.
Are we starting the conversation?
So, is any.
Are we starting the conversation or is?
We are starting the conversation, yes. So I think the.
So to start it, as you know, you had a meeting, a neighborhood meeting last week on a specific 40B proposal for the area in and around Holton Street. You know, very good attendance from concerned neighbors in and around that area. It's the same project I could present it to you two Mondays ago. We can talk a little bit about the specifics of that proposal. As we know, we have others that have come forward over the last almost two years now, but more like a year and a half. Cambridge Street, Forest Ridge, you have a new one that's being proposed for Highland Avenue in and around Dana Rav. So you have the general topic of potential 40B development initiatives in front of you. As part of that, we've begun a dialogue with Mass Housing, who receives many of these site application permits and what the town's steps or potential actions could be either proactively or in reaction to some of the proposals that have come before you. So one of the topics that has come out of that discussion is the idea about putting what's called a Housing Production Plan. It's a formal document that has a framework that comes within the regulatory outline that exists by DHCD under the Chapter 40B proposal. So there are certain guidelines and certain milestones that have to be contained in that formal housing production plan. The board has talked about beginning that discussion of seeking the necessary services, a necessary consultant who would assist the town in coming up with that formal plan. We've also talked about informal steps that can be taken, maybe parallel, at the same time that a housing production plan is, is being obtained by the services of consultants, which requires a certain amount of community outreach. People like John Servier, who's sitting in the audience, Brian and I have talked about that formal process of containing, of obtaining the production plan, but at the same time maybe moving forward on some ideas that the town could proactively support within the 40B arena. So those variety of things can go on simultaneously.
Right.
But the plan itself requires a funding source and a target number that the board would give to the administration here to begin to go out and maybe thinking about an RFP process that we would put together, that we would get responses to. So that's the purpose of putting it on tonight's agenda. We've talked in the past about the fact that the Housing Trust Fund is the source that can probably support the cost of bringing onboard a consultant and creating the plan. So those are the kinds of things that are up for your consideration tonight as you begin to take some steps to move forward.
Do we have an estimate of what the cost would be to?
You know, I think it's ranged, Mariano, anywhere from, you know, I've heard on the low end, $45,000 to $50,000. We've heard on the high end, depending upon, depending upon how intricate the plan would be, to upwards of $75,000 to $100,000. So I think there's a range. It's a broad range, but I think in that range, $75,000 might not be an unreasonable target to begin planning around.
Is that what we've seen other towns around us?
Well, we, we have some examples of other communities that are larger than ours. Newton is one that, you know, we keep hearing reference to, has put together a pretty good plan that's been filed recently. Larger community, obviously, by substantial, significant amounts, you know, 80,000 to 90,000 in population. So I think we could carve backwards from something like that. And I think what we, we would continue the dialogue with Mass Housing, for instance. You know, we had the staff out and started that discussion. I think we would compare notes in there, try to pull out plans of communities of similar size, some similar demographic backgrounds and get a better idea around pricing from something like that.
If I recall, in the discussions with Mass Housing, they also mentioned that they and DCHD were interested in a towns that would work with them on a pilot program to look at smaller, I mean, the economics of the development pushed the developers to do the.
Smaller projects.
300 and they were saying, well, you know, in a town like Winchester, there's very few locations for that. So they were saying, they'd like to figure out how to sort of encourage smaller 20, 30, 50 downsides.
We could explore that.
And I got the impression that they would provide some money and technical assistance.
They are providing funding.
Would help, yeah. We also have all the work that went in to look at high school sites. I think they looked at a good dozen or more of town-owned properties, most of which turned out to be highly unsuitable for almost anything but forest, wetlands, things like that. But that's, we have a good base of information for the publicly owned pieces of property that could help the process along quickly.
As a point of information, too, just for people that are new to this process, it allows the 40B legislation allows developers to circumvent the Board of Selectmen and the local.
Local zoning.
Local zoning by law. So, you know, we are, while we are engaged in the, in the process and working with developers with these for mitigation and dialogue of what's best for the community, it, our vote will not be determinative of whether or not these, these happen or not. And Mill Creek, for the Holton Street project, they haven't actually filed their project eligibility letter. So the information session that we held last week was just a general information session for them to get some dialogue from the community about what would, what would work and what, what wouldn't work, so.
And we could have some specific discussions about a game plan around continuing to engage the Holton Street, so to speak, Cross Street community as part of that, you know, meeting that got kicked off last week. We can continue maybe to put together working groups. I know Dave is continuing his outreach to that area of the community as well, so that can be a specific piece of what you talk about tonight. But I think in general, we're talking about getting the production plan going.
Yeah. I mean, as far as 40Bs, I mean, we, we are reactive because we have very little say. So to me, having that, the housing production plan where we can have some say on how affordable housing is done instead of being able to only work at the edges of what developers already pretty much can bypass through the comprehensive permit process that 40B allows. I think it is key for our town to, to be able to gain some control back. And the housing production plan is the first step for that.
And I think, Mr. Richard, you may recall the details, I think Mass Housing told us, and I may have my details wrong, but that they said Brookline was the poster child for the moment of how not, or the problems you have. Like Winchester, they did not have a housing production plan. And they, I don't know quite whether, whether it was this year or last year, but they had 10 proposals, or most of them for fairly substantial development projects. They were trying to handle all at once. The housing production plan, I think they explained to us, would not, would not allow us to dismiss those, but it would certainly allow us to try to pick and choose and then to, to manage the process so that we didn't have to deal with them all at once because it's a very expensive effort to deal with all of these on the town's part. So I think managing the flow of applications to us and steering them would be very, very helpful.
I mean, I think the shield effect of it is relatively minor part of it. It's the best part of the production plan is we, we plan and try to direct the effort where it fits best.
And you analyze your needs, you know, how much housing you have in a variety of categories.
In my conversations with the Department of Housing and Community Development recently, they confirmed that none of these housing production plans that have, there's over 100 of them that are in existence that have been put into effect have started without an anchor project or something as large as this. So, you know, even at some point, if we had done this, you know, years ago, it would have, it would have been a project like this somewhere in Winchester. So it's, I think it's a good, you know, opportunity for us to move forward, but it's the requirements of housing production year over year have been very difficult for all these communities and they are very rarely meeting those goals. So it's, the housing production plan is an opportunity for us, but there aren't communities that have, you know, 20-unit housing structures built.
It's not like planting a tree and.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's impossible to chip away at like that because you're really working with the private market, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we understood that failure to meet your housing production plan is not penalized. However, if you don't have one, you get very little, you get very little, very little assistance in steering the process and.
Part of that housing production plan is you actually have to produce housing.
You have to produce.
The tricky part of it.
If you don't make quite your, quite your goals, you're not penalized, but if you don't have the plan, you're at risk of getting inundated.
Right.
So, okay.
Well, yeah, I think, I think on Holton Street, I think our, I think, I think we're all generally in favor of establishing a working group, sitting down with, you know, Mill Creek and this group and discussing the issues that people have. And hopefully, also, I think Mill Creek's anxious that everybody, particularly the abutters, understand the trade-offs that they're looking at in terms of their development, what, what they can.
It could be, I think one of the things that I came out of the meeting with is that there may be different rings of interested constituents who have different concerns. You know, I think obviously the residents of Baldwin Street were very concerned about the impact that anything new would have on their immediate neighborhood, whereas some of the commentators who were concerned about the traffic impacts that, you know, would kind of spiral out from a project like that. Not necessarily the, you know, the building setbacks, the, you know, the architecture, the, you know, the amount of green space that might come with a new development. But, so there can be, it can be a variety of viewpoints that we, you know, through the working group. And again, if Dave continues to have his outreach, we can pull in those representatives from each kind of segment of the neighborhoods there.
Yeah, I think if we got a working group together, I'd also suggest that we perhaps get Anderson Krieger or others to come in and give us a briefing on the 40B law and the case history. We, between the 416 Cambridge Street project and the proposed Forest Ridge project, we had a great deal of opportunity to learn about the fairly rigid interpretation of that law. And I think it would benefit everybody involved in the Holton Street project to also hear some of that information and how we can work with it and around it to make it work. And I think the questions, you know, what are the design alternatives we need to bring back to Mill Creek? Some good ideas about design? What about improvements off-site? You know, how critical are the traffic, do we want to look at other things, what can be done for the community? I think those would be very good tasks.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, I think this is a very rare one for us, isn't it? I mean, all the others, when we found out about them was when we got the DHCD letter that said, they filed, right? So, and you have 30 days to respond.
I think, I think we also, at some point, we also discussed perhaps inviting to Mill Creek to brief the Planning Board and the Design Review Committee. I don't know whether they want to do that as part of a working group or separate one, but they were still interested. Neither the Board of Selectmen nor the Planning Group have direct jurisdiction, but we're both going to be asked to comment on it.
Right.
Well, in regards to housing production plan, I mean, we certainly should be working with the Planning Board and the Housing Partnership Board.
Yeah, I was thinking specifically 40B.
Yes, yep. Yeah. And I just wanted to say also that, you know, the working group will be in conjunction with our normal public hearings that we will commit to do in, either in the neighborhood in Rocko Lynch. So it won't be instead of. So I think that we've found the working groups are successful in the past in regards to ever source.
And I guess I would emphasize, one of the messages I heard coming out of the meeting the other night was people saying, well, are you, is the Board of Selectmen doing anything for us? And I had to point out to them that the meeting was in fact sponsored and organized by the Board of Selectmen. And I think I heard from all of you that, you know, we're committed to holding as many meetings or convening or helping to moderate as many as, as possible to keep people informed. I think that message ought to go out fairly clearly to people.
Well, with regard to the housing production plan, I would like to, and I.
Did you want to recognize Claire?
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a question and make a comment? So what I remember also with the, the housing folks that came in, so with, with the production plan, if you've got some action going, you can get a, the quote-unquote, stay.
Safe harbor.
Safe harbor, you know, so that's something publicly to be made known that if we have the production plan and we have some, we're performing, the hope is that we can get two, three, four years for safe harbor to prevent other 40Bs from coming down, coming on us all at once. And Richie, I know you brought it up before and I apologize asking, but what was the program you were talking about? Is there something about, is it for town workers, employees?
Workforce, maybe?
Workforce. Can you, I'm sorry, I forgot the details.
The Municipal Modernization Act contained an additional affordable housing provision that takes into account a town's desire for employee-based housing. So whether it's in this potential development that could go forward. in this potential development that could go forward on Holton Street, or it's at a location like Waterfield Road where, you know, you have your own parcel that we're putting the RFP product together. It's just something that I think.
Did you talk, was Mill Creek?
I think, yeah, I think they absolutely be favorably disposed.
Are they familiar with it?
Yes, they are.
I think they mentioned that in the hearing as well.
Yeah, we talked about that at the public hearing.
I just don't know, was it?
Yeah, Lars and I have exchanged information on it. So.
And I think also they, you know, had, you know, mentioned that senior housing, you know, as well, you know, is an opportunity. So, a balance of workforce, senior housing and, you know, multiple family housing could be the opportunity there. So.
Well, the question I had on that particular though was, does that have to, does that have to be a sale or a lease or, I mean, not a rental?
For what?
For, for the worker.
It's a covenant.
It's a rental.
But it's a rental.
Oh, they're all rental. Yeah.
They're all rentals.
This assumes.
So, that could be designating some of the townhouses, for example, as worker housing.
That would be the idea.
That would be the idea.
That has to be above and beyond the 25%.
You know, they seem amenable to that. And, you know, to some of the, to the point that was made, a question about, you know, what is the, you know, what is the value here? They, every submittal to the DHCD has to include a pro forma. So, because they do review the economics and the financing of the project. So, that would, that would all become available at the time of the submittal. So.
You mentioned the employee housing would be above the 25%?
Yeah.
Is that even if it's employee affordable housing?
It's affordable, but it's not subsidized at the same level as what is required under 40B for the 25% set aside. That is probably in between the.
Probably be in between the market rate and.
Low, moderate and the.
Yeah. If I, you're, you qualify, a family of four qualifies if they earn necessarily about 80,000 a year, and you qualify for the affordable. If you earn more than that, you don't qualify for the affordable, but you could, that, you know, then the middle, mid-range there could be available for.
Could have, you know, rent ceiling.
Rent ceiling, yeah. So, it's something we should learn more about.
And, you know, it could be five units, whatever it is that the town would think is practical at the same time to ask any developer to set aside. You know, you don't want 100 units, you'd never fill them, right? But it would be, wouldn't be a bad thing for the school system, for instance, to offer to incoming teachers in addition to, you know, being employed, that you could potentially qualify for housing that is set aside in this area of town. You know, it's just, it's a, it's a one additional thing that police officer, firefighter, whatever it might be.
Let me invite Claire to come up and make her comments.
Town manager.
His retirement home.
Do you want to move to those townhouses? Excuse me. I just had a page up. I want to, in case I botch the language. Okay, great. Once again, my name is Claire Barden. I live on Bonnerd Road, which I mapped tonight, is a mile from the proposed project site at Holton Street. So, I am not an immediate abutter, so I fall into a different segment. That being said, I do completely understand their plight and the position that they're in. So, I have a few points that I wanted to make tonight, and some of which are responsive to some of the discussions you all were having. The first is that I completely respect you all as individuals and appreciate you as public servants, but I do need to go on the record and express my disappointment in the board as a board for not developing a housing production plan until this point in time and placing Winchester in our particular state of vulnerability in which we now are. That being said, I am very pleased that the process is now beginning to develop a housing production plan. That, of course, will be a living document as the denominator and the housing inventory for the town overall will change over time. So, and of course, the housing production plan will take time to develop. It's not going to be instantaneous. I imagine it could be as long as a year to get one approved. Secondly, I wanted to comment about our leverage with the current developments that have been proposed or that are seemingly about to be proposed, referencing the Holton Street one. While 40Bs can bypass local zoning laws, I don't believe that we as a town should just simply roll over. And I understand that the Mill Creek developers have approached us in a different way before they filed their petition. That being said, I think they should be treated as hostile until they file that local initiative petition, showing that they are not. And I would hope and expect that the Board of Selectmen would use every lever available to you, which I know are very few, in working with them to meet the, or address the concerns that were expressed last Monday night, especially by those immediate abutters, in order to arrive at a solution that is mutually beneficial to both parties. I don't want Winchester to just roll over and say, our hands are tied, we're vulnerable, and now going forward, we'll have some more leverage. We do have leverage in things like public safety, and I would expect that we would use those things. And lastly, I wanted to, on the point of the, of the housing production plan, I wanted to address 40R and 40S, which has not really entered into the lexicon yet. It feels to me as an outside observer that we are about to jump over the threshold with our new bride, that being 40B. But of course, there are other ways to grow our affordable housing inventory. And my hope is that Winchester would use 40R liberally in its housing production plan. That specifically, for those who don't know, I'm sure you all do, but others may not, that the develop, or the establishment of a smart growth district, if Winchester develops one or more smart growth districts, we then become eligible to receive funds on 40S, which would offset the cost of educating those students that reside in those smart growth districts. It also locates those high-density housing areas near transit or town center or places that might seem more appropriate for them than the outskirts of town. So, those are all my points. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Well, I just might comment, Claire, that, you know, I think our Cambridge, as Lance mentioned, we learned a lot in our Cambridge Street experience. And a lot of it had to do with the existing, you know, the fact that certain conditions exist, existed in advance, and the fact that the developer was not required to address impacts to existing conditions.
Correct.
You know, there in particular, there's that, as you come up Cambridge Street, you have to make a U-turn in front of the gas station to get back to Wainwright Road. And yet, that was, you know, that, they were not required to do anything there by DHCD. So.
They may not be required to, but Winchester could ask and push them to in order to facilitate the development.
If I could add something on that point. So, Claire raises a good point, and larger communities should know that in each of the occasions where a site application has come in before us, we've always, and will continue to do this on the Mill Creek one as well, put together a comprehensive departmental review of what the proposal is. So, that, that includes legal, that includes engineering, it includes the DPW, water, sewer, police, fire. So, all departments are at the table in, in commenting on the proposed project. And if, if we think the sighting isn't inappropriate and there are ways to either deal with it legally or deal with it on an infrastructure kind of level, then we always try to take those lever points into consideration. In the end, the only thing that we can do, in each case, we've provided a comprehensive letter to Mass Housing where all of the applications in recent times have gone anyway, that take up all of these points, make recommendations, make a recommendation as to whether or not the site is appropriate for the size and density of the project that's being proposed. And then in the end, continue that dialogue, that effort, that analysis with the zoning board should a permit move forward to the ZBA level. So, there's always, everybody should know that there's always that level of engagement, usually initiated by the board, that tells management, make sure every cupboard is looked into, every corner and every aspect of the project is reviewed in order that we don't overlook an opportunity to make density smaller, whatever it is we can do to make the impact on the neighborhood lessen. But it's that comprehensive permit process that allows the developer really at the local level to jump over many of the zoning prohibitions or limitations. But in many cases, whether it's been at Cambridge Street or, and Forest Ridge is a good example, we did a very deep dive.
Yes.
On the access analysis there. And we think, you know, providing what we did to Mass Housing on their lack of access in and over Fallon Road and Stoneham was really what kind of set that project back, at least temporarily, for sure. So, everybody should know, and you draw out a good point, that we'll do the same thing on Mill Creek, even as there is this maybe opportunity to figure out whether or not some size project can fit in there, that can accommodate both neighborhood concerns and what the developer would like to do.
Yes.
So, that process will, will take place in the Mill Creek analysis as well. So.
Yes. And, and just to re-echo my point, that we not just execute that process as a matter of due diligence, but that any results of that process we use in our negotiations with the developer in order to achieve a mutually beneficial result.
Claire, before you, thank you very much. I mean, you clearly researched this topic very much. I want to reiterate what Richard said. We are going to use every lever possible to address the concerns of the, of the abutters as well as other neighbors, concerns about schools. On the 40R and 40S, the, the state specifically has guidance to redevelop existing sites.
Yes.
For, for affordable housing and for, for development rather than developing open land.
Yes.
And I, I think that that's a very important piece of the housing production plan, with the understanding that these sites are private property. So, we can't, most of them are private property. We can't force people to redevelop. But I think that's a very important piece.
Yes. But just to note, 40R is the development of a district, not of a site.
No, understood. Right. But the, these districts have a lot of private property. But I think it's very important that we do specifically look at redeveloping near the town center where there is transit, where there isn't as much traffic. We have a lot of traffic issues in town. And where people can walk to our small businesses, that's a win-win to have these districts. So, thank you.
And we're getting into a little bit of a deep dive in some of the details. But one thing that, so we've talked a little bit about 40R in the Waterfield lot, is you remember a part of our discussion there focused on the fact that 40R does not count toward the subsidized housing index. So, it is not, you know, a, a product that produces the same numerator, denominator, kind of equation that the 40B process does. It's required in order to have the entirety of a project count toward your index, which, for instance, in the case of something like Mill Creek, let's just use around number of 300 units, 25% affordable means all 300 then go into our numerator, denominator mix to go to that 10% index. 40R does not require that. So, 40R is only 20% affordable. You know, you would have to, in addition to designating, you can have a 40R product, but you have to have 25% affordability in order to have the entire project count toward the.
Yes.
Toward that same index equation. So, that's just one, one thing to keep in account. But it does bring back benefits that are available.
It opens up those chapter 47, excuse me, 47.
There's some limitation on, the Commonwealth has not done a very good job at funding 40S. So, there are no guarantees on 40S funds being available. There's been a consistent commitment to fund the 40R requirements, which are the one-time payments, and then the per-unit reimbursement that a community gets as well. But the 40S money has not showed up as readily, but, but both.
I would agree. But anything is greater than zero, which is what you get with 40B.
Thank Claire for reminding us what we should have done and what we should do in the future. But I think it reinforces my earlier suggestion that we have a lot of educating of people to do on what goes on, on what has gone on, and the complexities of moving forward on this. So, it's, it's a bit more complicated than just wishing it would happen and that's the problem.
I see John has a hand up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
John Servia from the Housing Partnership Board. I just want to make three brief comments on it. One is to reinforce Lance's suggestion, or even broaden your suggestion. There's a lot of misconceptions about 40B and 40R. And I think having a discussion with Arthur Krieger's team or with others who understand the 40B process would be very beneficial. And there is a tendency to view the, the 40B as an either or, us locals against the nasty states. There really is a lot of room for negotiation and a lot of room for discussion. And it's a, the Mill Creek process potentially, I mean, is, is often a much more positive footing than the Forest Ridge. They've indicated a willingness to work with the town. Most of the developers want to work with the town. Most of the developers would prefer to have a friendly approach because it saves them time and that saves them money. So, I think having this kind of tutorial, a little bit of that was done in the, the Zoning Board of Appeal hearing process. But I think a better job can be done, and is a better opportunity and a broader opportunity to do that right now. Let me just, so that's one comment. The second comment is that gets at Richard's budget figures, and my figures are a little bit lower than yours, but, so maybe I'll take yours. There are a set of very rigid requirements for a housing production plan that have to be satisfied. One of them dealing with how the analysis of, of need, housing need is done. But there are at least three other dimensions where there's a lot of flexibility. One of those is the extent of community outreach and consensus building that goes on. And so, the more of that you do, that costs a little bit of money, that gets into the higher budgets. A second one is the depth in which individuals, subareas or sites are examined and the amount of detail that's done in saying, okay, this is where we, we want to have development. And we think these areas are not so good. We think these areas are potentially better. That can be a fairly superficial analysis. It can be a much more in-depth analysis. And so, the Newton study that I think cost roughly $100,000, they put a lot of effort in their site analysis. And so, one of the questions that, that Winchester needs to undertake or make in designing a housing production plan is how much effort to put into site analysis. And the third is that housing production plan encourages towns or even requires towns to look at zoning and look at zoning options. And it's easy to identify hypothetically two, 300-unit 40B projects that would bring us to the inventory. I think everyone would refer to have what we've, town has followed forever is a scattered site policy where affordable housing is located throughout the town. That, that's going to require a little bit more work, a little bit more effort to, to get that dispersed sort of thing. I mean, the, the budget figures that I've heard for a minimal housing production plan in a smaller community tends to be in the even 15 to $25,000 range. My personal target has been in the 25 to $50,000 range. But it certainly is possible to get up into, you know, the $75,000 range. I think there are funding sources out there, MAPC, DHCD, Mass Housing Partnership, others that, that should be explored and can be explored over the next couple of weeks, or two to three weeks. And the last thing I would say, listing an itinerary, on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, I'm going to be attending the Annual Housing Institute conducted by, each June, by the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. Looking at the agenda, which I forwarded to Michael, there's a whole bunch of sessions on how to do housing plans. There's a session on how to do smaller housing developments that are in, you know, the 60 to 100 range, and how, how to make those actually work in communities. that are in, you know, the 60 to 100 range, and how to make those actually work in communities like Winchester. So I'm going to take my yellow pad of paper, take some notes.
Take some notes, John, and then bring them back.
Take your video camera.
Yep, and there'd be an opportunity to, I mean, Greg Watson is going to be out there conducting a session, the MHP people will be there, the DHCD people will be there, so there's an opportunity for some networking as well.
Great, thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Now, I mean, as far as the housing production plan goes, I was, been thinking about, and I'll throw this out for comments, to create a committee to oversee its production. And I would kind of envision that being two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members from the Planning Board, a member from the Housing Partnership Board, probably John, the Town Planner, maybe the Town Engineer, but certainly for utilities, or maybe not necessarily full-time.
And certainly the Assessor as well.
The Assessor and the School Committee, some member from the School Committee, too, probably somebody like Chris Nixon, who's well-up, well-informed in terms of the potential enrollment projections and, you know, where, what the needs of the schools are. So that, you know, that committee could be the committee that oversaw the drafting of the plan to bring it in for comment. Does anybody, are there thoughts?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and certainly we can, you know, add people as needed. I'm happy to help out with the housing production plan. I'm already the board liaison to the Housing Partnership Board, so I've had a little head start on this conversation as well, and been working with John on it, too, so I'm happy to help out in that context.
I would also be very interested.
Okay, there, we got two members right there. All right. Dave, any thoughts here?
So the committee would be there to work with staff.
Work with staff.
But just thinking, the consultant that's going to be hired to create the production plan, this board would be interacting with?
Interacting with, and I see putting in, I mean, some of them are there, like the School Committee and Housing Partnership and others would be there, Town Planner would be there to talk about, you know, the input for zoning, what zoning exists where, for example, to help the consultant. I mean, the consultant's going to need to pick our brains a lot as he puts it in, and these are the people, I think.
That's a great idea. I think a good example is the school master plan, how it was done, right? There was a consultant, but then there were people from the School Committee, from the Board of Selectmen, from Finance Committee, from different community groups, bringing the input so that the consultant gets the local knowledge necessary to go into that plan, right? Because, so I think that's the model that we can follow. And also, at certain points, before the plan was finalized with the master plan for the schools, but we could do that here as well, is have community input as well. The school master plan had multiple of those, at the high school, at the library, there were multiple of those, and we could do the same thing and work with staff to, on the drafting of it and getting that input.
Is it necessary to hire a consultant? And could we survey our peers, and has anyone drafted their own housing production plan in-house?
We had the in-house staff to prepare one, but I think generally they're done with the assistance of a consultant, generally. Doesn't mean it absolutely has to be, but.
Right, I'm just thinking there are many other districts who have them, could we look at our peers and see what they've done?
I think generally we'll find that we've stretched with the regular staff to get it done, and there's an efficiency, and people have done it before. Putting information together, I think Jim's committee, the purpose of that would be provide both technical, but also sort of more political direction.
You know, we have a planning department, but that's Brian. Brian's the whole department.
And he's reviewing site plans and, you know, all that sort of thing all the time, so.
I would suggest maybe we ask the Town Manager and the staff to put us together a draft scope of work, something like that. I think that we have relatively few sites, which should drive down some of the cost of a site search, but finding suitable sites is going to be very difficult, and that's going to drive it right back up. I think we should allow a very sizable budget for outreach. I think the, I think Newton did a very nice housing production plan, because I remember Jim, and I've heard it from other people, that they produced a very nice consultant-driven program, and once it got published, everybody in town said, not my site, not my neighborhood, thank you very much.
They had six sites and nobody had consent to sign any one of them.
So I think there's a very, there's a very large, I mean, a very large effort to sort of convince the town to move forward on this, because the town has been very resistant to any kind of development, whether it's market rate or otherwise, so it's going to take a great deal of effort in that. So the other piece, I think we probably would be, well, before we actually set a number to this, I think it'd be a good idea to find out how much money is available for technical assistance, and, as I gather, there's probably four or five sources that we could tap, 10, 15, 20,000. Some of it's going to be in kind, but I think that would help us, we know how much we can bring in, that would help us balance the town's share of that, and I would anticipate that it'll be complex enough so there'll be a Phase Two requirement for more work and more effort, and so we might want to hold some of our money back.
I was trying to keep the committee fairly small, you know, I mean, it obviously could be expanded to include a lot more people, but I figure with a Town Planner, keep the Planning Board engaged, and, you know.
Well, it's just, I mean, they, yeah, they're working on their master plan, so, I mean, I think that they're a little bit more engaged in this process. They should be a little bit more engaged in this process, and may have some funds to contribute as well.
Well, I did have two members of the Planning Board on the committee, so.
That's great.
So I guess, is that a consensus?
Yeah, we'll come back with something for you for your next meeting, recommended scope of work, kind of a budget plan, timeline.
Timeline and so forth, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I think sooner rather than later.
And, you know, we'll follow, for the time being, follow, it's up Dave and the board's lead on whatever else to do around the Holton Street specific project, how much more outreach we want to do.
Yeah, I think we ought to move fairly quickly to form this working group. You know, so perhaps reach out to the neighbors there on Baldwin, and the other, some of the other people who've come forward, and let's convene a meeting sometime later this month, before we lose them all to vacations.
Yeah, and speaking with the developer to arrange that as well. I think that they were open to the working group, but also had an interest in speaking directly with the Baldwin Street neighbors and the direct abutters individually. So now, I can make a motion as well to, for the board to direct the Town Manager to pursue the housing production plan, do we need a, you know, do we need to do this formally? I think we should.
I think what you should have to do is bring something back to you, and then you vote a, take a vote at that time.
Let's take a vote to move forward with the housing production plan. So I move that the.
Moving for drafting RFP for one.
Yeah, drafting RFP.
A process, a process.
Move forward to establish a committee, oversight committee, and a scope of work for a consultant to support that committee.
So moved.
Second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous? All right. Then, the item we skipped was Building Department fees, and the purpose of, I was hoping to have some more information, but since Stacy's off on vacation, we don't have those numbers. It's been a number of years since we've looked at the fees in the Building Department. And the issue that I'm looking at is, is it possible for us to reexamine those fees with the thought in mind of potentially bringing onboard a part-time zoning enforcement officer? So that we would actually pay for that. So this is really some information for you right now to what the current fees are. I'm hoping to get a rundown on what the actual cost of the Building Department is, of operating the Building Department.
Yeah, we, just to pitch in, we went through a similar drill about eight years ago, 10 years ago, dealing with the zoning, all the permitting that has to go on for subdivisions and everything else, and I think that, if I remember correctly, you can bill to recover your costs, you can't bill to make a profit.
Right.
So, but what we did at the time, and Beth Rudolph will remember it, and probably is a good source, is we took a list of all of the types of permits, as you have here, and we went back and we looked over the last preceding two years, I think, and they picked out, Beth and folks picked out about a, you know, a dozen of each, and they went back in their memory lane and said, you know, how much effort do we really put into this one, what were the, you know, how much engineering, how much planning, how much, and they looked at roughly the actual, tried to estimate the typical costs for these things, and it turned out to be quite effective. She put together a spreadsheet, and we just ran it down, and then picked and reset the rates, and that probably is well overdue, so it's a good idea.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's been several years since that was done, so, you know, and so we're looking at, you know, it's time to update them, and if we can work in this zoning enforcement officer. And I also want to make sure that, you know, so often when we look at these cost, when the government, when governments look at the cost, they forget something called overhead.
Benefits.
Benefits and vacation time and all that sort of thing, that's got to be built into the rate, so, you know, I think it's imperative that we look at that as well.
Looked at the cost, but we also have the opportunity, as we've discussed, some years of hiring somebody who's a consultant, who's probably is a part-time position at least to start, does not necessarily have to be a part or full-time employee, so there's a range of options.
Right, but that's what I was looking to see, can we actually afford it? Can we afford it, and can we build it into the fees? I mean, if not, then we have to find some other source, but this is just to start the process of looking at that and seeing if we can.
Excellent.
And that's where I'm going with this, so if anybody has any comments or thoughts.
As long as, sorry, Wayne.
I had actually had similar thoughts, even before I saw this, I had talked to a few folks in town, and then I called around to other towns, just to see where they're at on their costs, and, you know, the $15 per thousand seems to be the sweet spot of some other towns, we're pro, you know, could be in the $10 to $20 range. The other factor that goes in is the dollar per square foot that the building department would apply to a new construction. I think they use $135 a foot. If there's one area that I think there's an opportunity to maybe look at, it's more on that than the $15 per thousand, and I think with the cost of construction, labor, I mean, material costs increases, you know, I think in a town like Winchester, you're probably looking at, you know, at least $150 a foot for.
Yeah. So I would also, Jim, I would include all the planning and ZBA-related permitting, not just the construction-related stuff, because a zoning enforcement officer would be, in fact, out there, not to enforce the electrical wiring, but also to basically the question of, did you build it according to the plans and such? There's a source of funds there that I don't, I don't know that we've updated those in six or eight years either, so.
Well, that was, that's the point.
Yep, yep, yep.
That's the point. I mean, I don't know where we end up, but, you know, I think that that's, we need to look at it, and that's the purpose for starting this. All right? I don't think there's need any action right now, we're going to need to get the cost together, and I would ask Richard to help us work it. And then, last item, before we get to the consent agenda, is Skilling's turf field update with as far as carbon offset, and.
So as you recall, as part of your discussion about supporting the article at town meeting for the synthetic field upgrade, you talked about several things, you know, as sort of a mitigation effort toward the impact of bringing the synthetic online instead of natural grass, planting of trees, requiring that, as you did new RFPs for the replacement of both Manchester and what would be the new Skillings, that you have as a component, a condition of any new RFP, a recycling requirement, that the product that's being taken off the field be recycled as part of the process of laying down a new one. So those are the kinds of things, and maybe a larger policy as well about carbon impact for municipal kinds of contractual activity, capital activity. So I think the two main things are how much you put toward that offset, you know, I know at the kind of staff and interested resident climate action folks meeting that we had, Mariano was doing a calculated amount on what by a certain amount of carbon tonnage would be, and people like Priscilla Calabria was on our Climate Action Advisory Committee had numbers as well. I think, you know, in general, it seemed as though the board landed on a $10,000 offset number that could be proposed and put into either of the Conservation Commission's tree program, could be put anywhere, actually, maybe even a group of residents helped with ideas about how to invest at locations with plantings and whatnot. But either that, or the Town's Shade Tree Fund as well, which plants so much every year, but I think that was the number. We need a source, we had recommended to you that maybe your source money could be the funds that come in from your pilot exchange with Winchester Hospital. But that's part of where the discussion was going at the time.
Yeah, on one of our forays over to get coffee during Town Day, Priscilla grabbed my ear, they're thinking it through, you know, the initial idea had been maybe trees, but they, you know, they're beginning to basically chew on the question, you know, there are energy conservation measures, could you, should you be spending the money accelerating things like the work that Susan McPhee and others are doing there? Trees are obviously a sort of visible piece, but, you know, there's education and homeowner actions, I mean, there's a range of things, and I think that what she was saying was that what should be, what's the most effective?
It could be other solar initiatives, it could be other energy.
And they were hoping, they were, I guess, hoping we would, they wanted to be encouraged to do that, and I told her I thought we would encourage them to come back with a range of ideas, because they were looking at what other towns and cities had done to see what was cost-effective and visible, so I would expect that she will come back and contact you, Richard, or somebody shortly and say, hey, we've done the research.
I think there's a couple pieces here, you know, one is the initial money is part of the Skilling's field offset project, but then also to create a policy, you know, around, you know, what happens next, so, and they will evaluate and make a recommendation to us on what to do with the $10,000, and then a separate recommendation for a policy for offsets for other projects. So, and, you know, so we can kind of chew on those as we go. So the initial task before us is really on the $10,000, if we move to direct the Town Manager to extract that from the hospital gift account.
Talking with Priscilla, I thought, the impression I had was they were going to try to shape policy and come back with a couple tangible project ideas that would fit into the budget, and the other question that I think Jim had asked was, you know, is it, you have to spend $10,000 for one year, or could you spread it over two years or five years and on different projects? So I think they were thinking of coming back with some cluster of answers to those and see if they all fit together, so I would expect, I don't know how long it'll take them to chew it over, but.
Well, you know, I must say, as far as the policy goes, I mean, I have some serious concerns here, and they're really budgetary more than anything else. When, it seems to me that if, you know, this is, doing this is setting a precedent, okay? And where does it stop? Do we, when we build a new Morocco, do we offset the carbon emissions from a school? I mean, that could be an enormous cost. When we pave a road, there's a pretty significant carbon cost to paving a road. You know, do we? You know, do we, do we require carbon offset for that? You know, where, 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 where does it stop? You know, and how do we, how do we contain it into something that we can afford? I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to offsetting, you know, to, to some extent. But I think we need to, to be more thoughtful in how we go about this, because, you know, if, if, if the calculation came from, from Mariano, I mean, with no disrespect to Mariano, I don't think he's an expert in calculating carbon offsets.
Well, you would have liked his calculation, because it was pretty low.
Yeah, it was lower. But I agree that I'm not an expert. I, I don't think that, um, we are, I, I think the idea is a policy where we involve climate action committee in the conversation of new projects. They were involved in the conversation of this project and there was a specific, uh, mitigation for, uh, carbon offset that we agreed upon. I think in future projects, the idea is that carbon offset is, is part of the conversation of whether mitigation makes sense. Not necessarily that today we're committing to offsetting a hundred percent of a new Morocco or anything like that. That's, that's my understanding of, of what we're talking about.
And what climate action can inform us a little bit, uh, better on after, you know, uh, doing a little bit more research, are some of these options. When we look at the schools and what we've done with LEED certification, that, in that sense, that is, uh, in offset as well. And so, um, it's, uh, I don't think there necessarily is always going to be a, uh, an equation that says, you know, dollar for dollar. So, um, there is, you know, um, grass and, uh, properties that, that we take for construction that absorb greenhouse gases, but there are also buildings that are erected that, um, also create more, uh, greenhouse gases. So as part of our climate action plan that, um, we developed and we are a green community, we committed to reducing our greenhouse gases, uh, gas emissions, um, over a period of time. And, uh, one of the benefits of our commitment, um, as a green community is, uh, we've saved a lot of money. And, um, and as you see with Susan McPhee and the, the work of, um, Sustainable Winchester and the work of, uh, the Energy Management Committee, uh, as well as Climate Action, uh, the town has reduced its costs and, um, saved energy. And, uh, uh, we've been, uh, awarded throughout the state for that. So there's, um, there are other options besides, um, straight dollar amounts for future policies, so.
I think it might be a good opportunity for us to push the question of where we're going with our energy management.
Yep.
And other issues. I mean, I think the, when we had the, uh, Energy Management Committee in a while ago, you know, we have a good history of picking off the low-hanging fruit. And I think one of the messages I got was there's still some good opportunities, but they got a little, the payback is, you know, the obvious projects are a little bit further out. Uh, and it might be a good, a, good idea to use this general conversation about, you know, what is energy management? What is carbon offset? To basically think about what we, you know, what do we want to do and what's its cost?
Well, one of the things that I.
Force, force us, force us into the conversation.
Well, one of my points about separating it, spreading it out over a couple of years, for example, is we're already have money that we're allocating to what does carbon offset? I mean, we, we spend, you know, the DPW budget's about five grand a year for street trees, all right? You know, why do we, you know, we should take credit for that. Maybe we could, you know, enhance that and, and get our ten grand over two years. Maybe it only costs us an additional two thousand, uh, over what we're already budgeting. Now, let's take credit for what we're already doing. And I, you know, when I talked to Priscilla also, it bent my ear. And she talks about there being, you know, the two, one is the reduction of emissions, but the other is the sequestration of the carbon. And right now, I think she, she was telling me that she really was pushing now for more sequestration rather than reducing emissions, that, you know, a lot of the, as you say, the low-hanging fruit's been taken. So, you know, I, I think I need to, we need to be careful. Oh, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against this. I'm just saying I think we need to be a lot more careful about how we go forward and, and, and I, I don't know how we write a policy. I've been thinking about how you write a policy. And I really don't have a good answer. You know, maybe, maybe the Climate Action Committee can come in with a draft, uh, that we can start working on, but.
I think that's what they intend.
Well, yeah, but I think maybe the question that was asked earlier is what are productive investments of those dollars? And if we get some solid examples of those, then you'd be get back into a policy. I mean, if the answer is the most effective bang for your buck comes out of, you know, putting solar panels on high school or ripping out the McCall heating system, you know, then that's a very, you get a different focus than if you.
Capital intensive.
If you're capital intensive, a different focus than if you're doing trees or if you're doing homeowner programs. I think what, I think one of our core problems right now is we have good intentions and the CNE for a policy, but there's no specifics yet, no project program level stuff to really sort of say, what do you really want to do? Where's, where, where's the bang for the buck? And therefore, what should your policy be? I mean, if it turns, if somebody comes up with ideas that are really productive with energy savings and carbon emission reduction, then you can write a policy around that that would be very solid, because you'd know you're gonna be able to get the paybacks. But if it's all fuzzy for us yet, we're not ready, not ready to write the policy. But forcing the conversation would be good.
But I, I mean, I, I, it, I tell you, one of the things that bothers me about this, this whole Skilling's project is, is that to me, if we're gonna do this, it should be part of the project cost. And it should be approved as part of the project cost, not as something separate that we do over and above that every time. You know, that we have a process and let's, you know, which should be vetted and included with each pro, with each, with each project if, if in fact we're going to do that.
Well, as part of this, you know, project Climate Action in our discussion, I mean, we wanted to give them the opportunity to make a recommendation on, uh, the best outcome, um, for, um, this investment, which, um, is, uh, with, which they felt at that point would not exclusively be, um, at Skilling's field. So, um, as you know, when we bond, um, a, a project and, and project costs, um, they have to be tied to the site very closely. So we wouldn't have been able to, uh, bond, uh, this ten thousand dollars as part of the project and then do work at Onshore Road or in the Alberjonah or, um, at, uh.
The debt exclusion question was not written that way. I mean, it, that's, that's a specific detail to this debt exclusion question. But, but, um, you know, if the policy, I think what the policy would be about in the future, you know, when the town does a project where, uh, carbon emission, um, locations or substances are being eliminated, you have a kind of a policy that goes along with replacement. You know, in this case, you had the grass that was going and the synthetic that was going in. Other than future contracts saying recycling shall be an element of, um, of the new contract when it comes time for replacement, can you have a broader, a broader policy that says you're gonna look at the carbon impact of any?
You're, you're making me think. It's not necessarily just town projects. A good case example right in front of us is Holton.
Yeah.
Forty-B. What would you ask of a developer who's gonna put, you know, how much energy conservation goes into the building?
Yeah, you would ask the LEED's efforts. You would, like you.
What do you want out of that? Uh, what's your policy on that?
They're not drawn into, uh, watershed, but the Conservation Commission, for instance, has a policy where they make, um, replacement, uh, you know, of trees that come down, trees that are eliminated. There's a replacement analysis that they expect the developer to be able to show. And they put in as a condition, uh, for obtaining a permit within the, you know, within the watershed area.
Good example.
It just so happens that they're not in a watershed, but, but could you ask them to make similar kinds of strides?
There are no trees.
But we have, I mean, we have, we have, you know, if you draw in three hundred units and your cars for three hundred units, you're getting quite an impact, not only.
Getting three hundred trees out.
Management of the traffic, but, uh, you know, what's the, what's the impact on the region? I mean, it's not.
And when we look at the RFP as well for water fields, uh, you know, and we have, uh, you know, kind of, uh, we're a balancing act of, um, you know, what the beneficial, uh, you know.
Our big benefit would be encouraging the MBTA to switch from their diesels, locomotives. Those things generate an awful lot of pollution relative to what they could in the future.
Yeah.
But that's probably not, that's not, that's a little premature for the.
Oh, yeah, but now, but you, but you know, again, you, you raised that point. It remind me that, uh, you know, as we do our own projects, you know, uh, sewer projects, for example, you bring in equipment and that equipment has emissions, you know? Do we compensate for that every time we, we, we put in a new sewer or, or repair a sewer? I mean, you know, these, these are questions that I'm not sure, you know, how, again, the question comes to me. How much can this town afford?
Well, that's not the policy.
And how do we limit, and how do we set a policy that limits, that limits our, our exposure?
Well, that's not the po, I mean, we don't have a policy yet.
We don't.
The process is we're starting.
We're starting, I mean, I understand we're starting. I'm just saying, you know, parameters to me are, you know, these are some of the issues I think need to be addressed in a policy, because, uh, otherwise you've got an open-ended ticket to cost the town money.
I don't think that we've.
That's not the intent.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
No, I don't think it, I, I don't think it is either, but.
There's other, other ways of doing that. I can't remember the, I know there are state departments of transportation that we've worked with who have put into the bid requirements. You know, what are the conditions that are more attractive to the state in picking one bidder over another? And so, and they put in conditions about, you know, the quality of the emissions or how you manage oil dripping out of your machines or, there's a whole set of technical, small-scale things that really impact the environment pretty heavily. And I know some of the state DOTs have said, we got a policy of, you know, um, giving points to contractors in that case who manage their environmental impacts better than others. I mean, it doesn't cost the town much, but, uh, or doesn't necessarily cost the town anything at all. But, you know, it forces other people to sort of pay attention to what they're doing and not leave the problems on our doorstep.
Right. And I, and I think that, you know, what we need to understand too is, uh, the Climate Action Advisory Committee, they are specialists in, uh, you know, advising us on these issues. And, uh, they will bring policy recommendations to us. And these offset policies and these calculations are very well-established. And we'll have an opportunity to take the best practice from those recommendations and, uh, make our own decision what works for Winchester. You know, I don't have a fear that all of a sudden we're going to be out there with a, uh, abacus counting, you know, every emission from every lawnmower in town. But, you know, uh, in the aggregate, um, you know, we, um, have made a commitment to take responsibility for some of these emissions. And, um, I think these, um, it will be, it will be easy to apply these, uh, offset policies, these well-established offlet, offset policies to, um, to Winchester, so. So anyways.
Having done, having done some of those economic calculations, take a deep breath.
I think we've got a couple of specific things that you said you would do with the specifics.
Circle back though on this.
Yeah, there's.
Skilling's field offset.
Yeah, to, uh, you said you would identify a sum of money. I think it was generally discussed as ten thousand dollars.
Yep.
Uh, to set aside for whatever initiatives. Originally it was tree plantings. If there are other better ideas that come forward, we don't have to spend the money right now. But we'll like, we'll assist you in identifying the part of money. We think we know what it is. How we go about spending it, we can agree that, you know, we'll continue to, um, identify that process going forward. And then the other specific thing that the board committed to was that in the future replacement, um, RFPs for both the, the two synthetic fields, assuming you won't have any more, but at least for those two and any others that come online, that you will have a.
A recycle.
Recycling, uh, requirement, um, which, you know, if you remember the sub-consonant Chris Brennan told you that fairly commonplace now. They're in most of these re, uh, replacement project efforts. So we just notify capital, notify field management. You announce it as a policy to management here that when the day comes where we're redoing those fields, that recycling of the existing turf, the rubberized pellets, all that, that can be recycled happens as part of that contract. So those are the two things. The broader, big piece about what kinds of other things you can try to commit to and contain and whatever other construction initiatives we have, that's something we can continue to debate, shape, get input on.
Well, I, I think an action item would be for us to go, you know.
Yeah, there's, number one, there are a series of things you're doing already. You know, whether it's the LEED stuff, whether it's what you're committed to under your, uh, green community's designation. You've got commitments there that.
Right.
You're trying to pursue with regard to energy consumption. You are pushing other things through, um, through the efforts that, uh, Susan McPhee, uh, brings forward. We should find, you know, we should, uh, list all of those.
And integrate them.
Yeah, so we know what it is we are already doing. And there may be other ideas that, uh, that come from various sources to put into a larger policy. But all, all good points should be taken into account. What's the limit on it? What's the cost for adopting something? Goes above and beyond where we are now.
So. All right. So I think basically, I mean, the, to me, there's the two action items for the Climate Action Committee is to come back to us with some, some proposed projects, proposals for doing these offsets.
Yep.
And, and, uh, you know, possibly, uh, you know, their recommendations for a policy.
So first is, is, um, a, a motion for the, um, ten thousand dollar, for the, to direct the town manager to.
Identify.
To identify, uh, ten thousand dollars, um, from the hospital gift account or another account. And earmark that for.
Exactly.
The.
Carbon offset.
The carbon offset, um, and, uh, and have the Climate Action Committee report back to us on, um, the.
Suggested, uh.
Yes.
Investments.
Suggested investments.
Okay, so it's just identifies, it doesn't commit at this point.
Doesn't commit, yes. Yeah, yeah, it's, right.
A second?
Second.
All right, discussion? Dave, you're sitting very quiet over there. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, and, uh, and then the next, um, I move that we direct the, um, car, the Climate Action Committee to establish, uh, or make recommendations on establishing a carbon offset policy, um, and work with the town manager, um, in, uh, in making that recommendation to the board.
Or make draft recommendations.
Draft.
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 Because I, I think what our discussion tonight has pointed out is it's a fairly broad topic. And it has lots of ramifications. And we probably oughta get some draft material in here to keep that conversation going and figure out how to.
Yes.
Integrate all the pieces we've been talking about.
Yeah.
And delimit them where needed.
And that we establish a specific policy as to the recycling requirements for future replacement surfaces in Manchester and Skilling's.
Yeah, so.
Some draft, some draft policy. I think maybe the first question would be to get, you know, to bring to us, some like, some good examples of what might, and examples of policies and examples of issues and how they've been treated, so we can begin to see the ramifications of it. I, I, I don't, I guess I would be uncomfortable in directing them to just go out and write a policy for us at this point. But I think if we get the process started, that would be good.
Okay. So, uh, but I, I guess I move that we, um, uh, direct the town manager to work with the Climate Action Committee on, uh, bringing to us some, uh, other policies and calculations as well as some, uh, best practices for us to, um, work with them on a draft, uh, carbon offset policy.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, uh, although any further comment? Oh? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then do we need, do we need another motion on the recycling or?
Could, uh.
You could make a separate motion on that?
Move to, uh, direct the manager to come up with a policy on capital replacement of the Skillings and Manchester Field.
Of synthetic turf fields in general.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Because there may be more.
Whichever.
So I move that we direct the town manager to, um, work to create a policy, um, of, um, capital management for the turf field replacement, um.
Recycling of all synthetic services.
Language to be inserted in procurement's for.
And recycling of all synthetic materials.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. No. Okay, unanimous. All right.
This is my fault.
Ramble on a little bit there.
It's a little bit stream of consciousness, but it's, uh, figure it out.
Before we move to the consent agenda, I just wanted to note, um, in your packet, you know, for the public to know that we have been notified by M.A.S. know, for the public to know that we have been notified by Mass Housing, speaking of affordable housing 40B projects, of yet another 40B project on Highland Avenue, and being proposed 24-unit development there, and more to come, but we will be responding to Mass Housing on, on that one. We also have in our packet an item on One Woodside and Wickford Road. I'm wondering if you could provide us further enlightenment on that, Richard? Or if you don't know, could you bring it to us for the next meeting?
I will do that. It's correspondence from residents in and around that area. It really concerns the Brian.
If we're, if we're a planning board zoning issue...
So, I'll give you a report.
If it's a, if it, I mean, if the proposal is for a subdivision, you must have a certain amount of frontage for each proposed lot, and that frontage must be on a public road. If they don't have it, it's not a subdivision, and it can be...
I think it actually...
I think there's actually construction going on there right now, which is why I raised the question.
Again, I don't want to pretend to be planning or zoning, but is it a public road, or a road...
Used and maintained.
That's used, no, no, a road that meets the standards.
It's actually, the language is a public way, so it's a public road, not a, if it's private, it doesn't...
It is a, it is a private way, and it's posted that way.
Yeah.
But so if it's a private way that is an approved private way, which means it meets the standards? Yeah, we're probably...
Yeah, this is a, it sounded like it was a driveway that was being used as a public way.
Well, you know, if you're driving down Wildwood, it looks like a road. Little stub road, you know?
This is, this is an issue for the, for somebody to go back and research the actual property deeds, what's in there, so.
But anyway, I just, I think we ought to get further information since there is...
Give an update at the...
Something for a zoning enforcement officer to look at.
Yeah, that's, exactly.
This would be for the lawyers.
This would be actually before. And, and also looking at the permit application for zoning, or for a building permit, I can see a couple of things that we should add to the bottom of that, I will let you know. But I mean, mainly, I think...
On the permit form?
On the permit application form.
Yep.
There should, I think there should be a sign-off by the planning board and the Conservation Commission before that permit's issued. I mean, rather than just the Historic Commission, which is all the sign-ups required right now. And that, that hopefully will avoid the little problem we had on Shore Road in the future.
We met, met with the commissioner, building commissioner and the planner, and talked about that very thing, so. Think we have some ideas for that.
So, hopefully we can get a revised application form.
And as you can see from recent correspondence, they brought that particular location back into the process.
Right.
Seems to have been resolved satisfactorily, so.
Well, till they, till they, till, till they meet the planning board. All right, let's go on to the consent, consent agenda, Mike.
So, we'll start with the alcohol beverage licenses, so.
Just a point of order, are we required by anything other than past practice to read every one of these? Can we...
Summary motion.
I don't want to deprive you of lots of fun, but I've, over the years, having done this myself and watched Jim and everybody struggling through and reading every one of these, whether we might just be able to say, you know, we, you move to approve the, and if they were numbered...
You move to approve the whole consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, I mean, it's up to you, Mike, how do you want to spend your evening? But you did a good job with the bond.
So, I, I move that we approved the consent agenda and the supplemental consent agenda as submitted under H1 and, what is it, SC1? An SC1.
Second.
Yeah? Now you're going to second it, so.
And before we vote, I might add that that includes acceptance of a donation from the Winchester Garden Club of $1,000 for verification of the bank of the Abrojona after the Culbert project is complete. We thank them for that donation.
Yeah, so I was asked the other day, when do we expect the bridge to be completed? Do we have a target?
On Friday?
Yeah.
It's always been called for around October.
October, okay, so it's still the same.
Still on schedule.
So, likely any, any work under this donation would be the following year, because there is no sense in doing it in fall.
Want to take credit for the $1,000 and reduce your $10,000 by that amount?
Yes? Yes?
That's Mariano's call, Kelly.
All right, is there any other items?
Can we vote on it?
I think we need a vote on it.
Yeah, we need a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Also, you know, just to, at some point on our agenda, I think we have discussed on numerous occasions, just looking at some of these fees and the way that we process these beverage licenses and, and, you know, for, so...
You've talked about whether or not you, singular licenses you want to reduce the...
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's a little bit, you know, too broad of a stroke, the way that we, you know, deal with these licenses now. I think that it, it limits some, you know, smaller events from happening and being affordable for some of our local businesses. So, maybe on our...
I think Jim had 80% of the table worked out at some point, a couple, three, four months ago. Can you remember where you put it?
I'll have to dig it out.
So, maybe we can add that to our agenda on the 19th, if it's not too full already?
Okay.
Because this is the time, we're heading into the season where things really pick up.
And see also about our nonprofits in town, community events, see if there's something we can do for, for those kinds of events that are not-for-profit.
Well, one of the, the questions that I had asked is whether we could bundle, you know, for, for, for one fee of $75, for example, you could have up to five events if you're a nonprofit.
Yeah.
And I don't, you know, I think I've gotten a clear indication from Mina whether that was feasible.
I will confirm that, but I think the, the board has a discretion over setting the fees, so, on one time.
On one time, yeah.
It's a question of administratively making sure that you, some costs are covered, but yeah, as you've had several of these, whether they're business owners, locations, the Janks, for instance, they can...
Yeah, the Janks, or the Sammon House, or, you know...
Or the Wrightlaw Farm.
Where you've got a commercially catered event, I think that's different than the nonprofit having its own event, you know? I think we can make a distinction there.
And, and maybe the chamber can weigh in a little bit as well, and if they've been in touch with some of their members to, to see what would be most helpful, maybe they'd be willing to contribute some of these fees for new businesses, I don't know.
All right, any further thing? Motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We got a lot to sign, guys.